Planning Commission work session for June 23, 2014 called to order.
Yep, tonight, we're going to start off between, starting here at 6 o'clock before our regular scheduled meeting at 7 o'clock with a presentation on Lynn Avenue corridor plan. So this is being run out of Public Works Department, so I'll turn it over to John Lewis to provide the introduction and then we'll go from there.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Commissioners, for scheduling the work session and taking the time to listen to us give you an update on this project that we think is pretty important. It's a fairly lengthy project. It entails several neighborhoods and several, three different street names, so it includes a pretty big piece of Oregon City, and it's a pretty important corridor. Reason why we're looking at this corridor is because the Transportation System Plan, which as you know is kind of the guidance document for our transportation system citywide, and it had several projects, and we heard a fair amount during the adoption of the Transportation System Plan that this corridor was pretty important to the community. So we've stitched together the three different streets and what we're calling four different segments of projects into one corridor plan. And we've worked with Wallace before, so you know Wallace Engineering. We've got David Brokaw, who's been running most of the project from Wallace with Jane Vile, who's also been pretty involved in the project as well. And then John Burrell, who doesn't have his name tag up there, he's been managing the project for the city. So we think we've got a good team and we're taking a pretty hard approach to getting community involvement. We've been to most of the neighborhoods, we've been in front of the TAC, I think, a couple of times, but in front of the TAC. So we just want to go through it for you. The reports definitely draft. They're, in fact, last time I looked at, that there was still some pretty big sections, I think those kind of end result sections that weren't in the plan. So we've been talking through how to move in that direction, but we don't want to do that without hearing from the Planning Commission, so we're looking...
Do you have copies of that for us?
We don't have copies of the plan today, but you, we'll have those posted on the website when we, when we're ready for those, for you to look at those definitely.
And the problem is, is that I'm paying for my own copying, so that's a lot of copying.
Yeah, and I think at the, at the public hearing, that the idea is to get this plan adopted, so it would be an ancillary document to the Transportation System Plan, so our plan is to get Planning, Planning Commission approval and City Commission approval.
Can I ask you a question? Something happened at the Planning Commission level the other day during a hearing, and it was a comment made by an applicant regarding the update of the comprehensive plan. And this document that you're talking about, is it going to be incorporated as part of the plan, so that we can refer to it in our findings with some official, with some official statement? Is it going to be an actual official document to the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to defer to Tony, but I believe it does. This changes the Transportation Plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan.
Some of these documents that we're dealing with now have legal consequences to them.
Right, that's why we think that's, that adds merit to the project list, and so one of the reasons why, I mean, it's nice to have a plan so that we can refer to it when development comes in the house and they want to do something along the corridor, we can always refer to this document. Even if it's 20 years out, we'll have the document to fall back on. The other reason is because, as you know, we're often trying to compete for grant funding for projects, and to have an ancillary corridor plan that's been vetted through the public and the public adoption process means a lot to, well, should mean a lot to those people making those decisions.
Well, it should mean a lot to the Planning Commission, to the city.
That's true.
Now we have a, we have an instrument, a tool, which we can refer to, and it's just not rumor, it's official.
Right. So with that, I'll go ahead and address this.
I'm going to just start, let Jane start off, talking about where we are with the plan and how the plan is put together.
And I apologize, I thought that the plan had been distributed or a link had been sent, so of course I assumed everyone had read it, page in, page out. So just briefly, let me just run through what we've done so far. Chapter one, introduction, kind of talking about, you know, what John was talking about with where, where we had approached this plan and where we're going and the process that we're taking. Chapter two, we looked at existing conditions throughout the whole corridor, transportation conditions and kind of like the character of the corridor, residential neighborhoods, what the streets are like, minor arterials, sidewalk here and there, bike lanes here and there, just the feel of the corridor and a complete assessment of all the different facilities that the corridor has based on the mode of transportation. Then we went ahead and based on those existing conditions and what we wanted from the corridor, what we, we came up with what we thought was lacking in chapter three, future needs assessments. That's an assessment of what the city and we and the public have expressed as what we see as needs, from an engineering standpoint also. So for instance, there are certain geometric deficiencies in streets, and there's also, we see, you know, a need in, there's incomplete sidewalk that's been identified in the TSP, et cetera, et cetera. And then chapter four, based on those needs and public input and city input, we developed some alternative concepts, some plans for sections of the street in addition to looking at a few other aspects of the corridor that the city was interested in that have been identified in TSB projects. So that's chapter four. And then moving on, chapters five and six, the final plan and implementation plan, excuse me. So at this point where we are in the planning process, we've come up with some concepts, we've refined those concepts, we've selected, you know, what we want A or B for, for most of the quarter, but a lot of refinement has to be done by the public, by the, you know, by the plan input from commissions, et cetera. So we recently had an open house meeting and there were, I don't know, I think John said there were 60 or 70 people there, and we have yet to go through all the comments and kind of compile that. The city's also done an extensive public opinions poll. I think there were 150 responses to that, 200?
Yeah, no, I think it took about 200.
Yeah, there were a lot, yeah, so that we have a lot of public input that needs to be incorporated in order to refine the plan and come up with an overall vision. So that's what the final plan, that chapter will be about. And then implementation, we'll go ahead and prioritize what projects are parts of the plan, and some of these have been identified in the TSB, most of them have. So they've already got priorities associated with them, and we've got some cost estimates going for those improvements. We'll also look at potential funding sources, so that's the plan.
Is there a reason why the numbering system changes?
I'm sorry. We, I put that together and it is completely my fault, so.
I just use numbers.
It's just, it's just, it's just an error on my part, and I apologize.
It's not a problem, I just didn't know there was a code.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no code. And, you know, I'm an English major, so I should know better, so.
The corridor's got lots of challenges, so we thought we'd throw a few in.
That's the challenge right there, see if they know what a five is versus a six in Roman numerals.
Yeah, so, thanks Jane. Anyway, so just to kind of break down where we are in Oregon City, the corridor is pretty extensive. It starts at Jackson Avenue and Fifth.
Jackson Street.
Jackson Street, sorry, and Fifth. Turns into Lynn Avenue and goes up the hill past, past the park, then crosses Warner Milne or Warner Parrott and becomes Leland Road, and then turns into Myers Road for the very end. And we've broken the project based on topographic constraints and issues into four segments that we feel were kind of unique in their own right, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So I intend to kind of breeze through this and then we'll can have questions and answers. You know, feel free to jump in if you have any questions during the presentation, though.
I think, one of the things I'll say about the segments is...
The big one, instead of that little tiny thing.
The segments are numbered one through four, that's not in any priority, although I would say that Lynn Avenue was one of the, one of the most mentioned concerns out of the Transportation System Plan, so still kind of wondering if that's the priority or not.
I would think it is, just because you've got Gardner Middle School and all those kids walking to and from, and I see a lot of them walking past Singer Park because they live down in the Pearl and all that. So I think because of the school, the schools plural, because Mount Pleasant's still there and it's going to have its own traffic issues, whatever it does become, that it would be a higher priority. I mean, I can understand from Myers and Leland why they want a sidewalk rather than a ditch to hop into, but...
So one of the first things that we, we looked at was trying to identify what we had in the corridor and where our deficiencies were. This map in particular kind of highlights where sidewalks and bike lanes are, where bus stops, and we used that information to develop what we wanted to do with the corridor as well as kind of how we wanted to break it up and identify the segments. And then as, as part of that, we identified a number of major concerns within the corridor. Obviously, the lack of sidewalks and bike lanes and just discontinuity of the, of the corridor was a concern. There was a number of safety issues throughout the corridor. We downloaded a fair bit of crash data and logged some pedestrian bicyclists' concerns and also a lot of speeding issues through the corridor. In addition, we wanted to take a look at some stormwater issues and what we can do as we develop this corridor, because we'll be required to do stormwater as we build out the corridor. And then identified where we have constrained right of way. There's a lot of, the right of way kind of jogs all over the place within the corridor and it's going to be a challenge. So from those, we identified a number of planning priorities that we felt were the most important things to address as, as we move forward with this thing. First and foremost, provide a multimodal corridor for, for all users, improve connectivity and access, improve safety and address these stormwater issues. Now, one of the things that, that we're looking to do as part of this requires us to build streets that are not to your standard, say. So to justify the, the limits of improvements that we're proposing with this thing, we went back to the TSB. This, this segment is, is an excerpt from the TSB, and the red text is, is our discussion points of, of how we're addressing and coming up with our optimum street design and why we're, we're proposing a much narrower right of way than would typically be allotted to a minor arterial in this corridor. Yeah, just, I mean, specifically right of way, steep slopes, geography constraints, a lot of current built out infrastructure throughout the corridor is going to just limit what we're going to be able to do in here.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a one side sidewalk situation there. Most of Lynn, you can't put sidewalks on both sides, so.
Well, we've identified some, some options in here, and we can, we can look at those real quickly as we move through this thing, but that's kind of the, the start of our discussion, yeah?
I was just going to say, just going to point out, the, the city standard at the very minimum would require at least 82 feet worth of right of way. And right of way through the whole corridor is extremely variable, and it goes from like 40 to 90, but for the most part, it's about 60 feet wide. So that's kind of our basis for a lot of the design, so.
So, yeah, again, we separated the, the concept into four different segments. Lynn Avenue from Fifth Street to Park Drive was the, the, one of the more challenging ones, up the hill past Singer Creek Park. Lynn Avenue from Park Drive to Warner Parrott, Warner Milne, had a lot more, was kind of, had some larger stretches of existing sidewalk and facilities through there, so that was a slightly different segment. Segment three and segment four lacked a lot of facilities throughout, and so we broke those up just along those lines. As far as a concept plan for segment one, we wanted to look at proposing new sidewalks and bike lanes and then address some of the items with, that are identified within the TSB and look for some other opportunities to improve safety, connectivity throughout that, that corridor segment. We've identified a few, a few issues within this. We also wanted to identify items within the sewer and the other master plans that we want to make sure that whoever does improvements to this corridor, you know, thinks about those improvements at the same time.
Oh, and let's just say Fifth to Park Drive, Lynn Avenue, that's the first segment. It's probably easier, you know, we're so into it, we're calling it segment one, but probably a little easier.
Yeah, and so as far as that segment goes, we've looked at a couple of different options that we're considering with this, and we put that out to the public. Alternative A provides a shared use path on the north side of, of Lynn Avenue, and then a bike lane or a widened shoulder, we can't really call it a bike lane because it's going to have pedestrians in that space as well. So a bike lane going downhill for Lynn Avenue on, on alternative A. Alternative B would be sidewalks on both sides, a climbing bike lane, and then sharrows for bikes going downhill. Now, both of these options are going to require some widening, and that's going to be a challenge because of some of the steep slopes and, and issues of slope stability and, and topography there. But we believe that, that these traveled sections with about a 40-foot width from, from edge to edge are reasonable within our corridor. With regard to segment two, this is Lynn Avenue from Park Drive to Warner Parrott Road. Again, we've identified a few things within the TSB to, to address. As you can see in red, there's only a limited section that doesn't have sidewalks, so providing some connectivity there would complete that segment. We also looked at some, some safety issues with regard to the mid-block crossings and getting pedestrians across Lynn Avenue here with just some of the speeds and, and the lack of control to traffic. And then for, for our segment two, because the existing sidewalk on the, on the...
Existing sidewalk on the west side?
On the west side.
Or on the east side, I'm sorry.
Tight?
Yeah.
Northeast.
Yeah, yeah.
On the east side is mostly curvetight, we kept that sidewalk alignment there, so it's not your typical with a, a landscape median. And then we, we addressed, you know, some of the stormwater quality issues with, with the potential for rain gardens along the corridor where that was applicable and doable. With regard to segment three, Leland Road from Warner Parrott to Myers Road, again, we had looked at addressing some of the TSB identified projects. The biggest issue with regard to segment three, we've incorporated the roundabout at Warner Parrott, Leland, Lynn, Warner Milne, and Central Point, which we'll talk about later. But this segment obviously has, has some major gaps to its infrastructure and a couple safety issues that, that we've identified as part of our plan. And again, for segment three, we'll be incorporating stormwater facilities where it's possible. Most of the sidewalks will be curvetight or we'll have setback with landscape medians where that's an opportunity. For segment four, this is Myers Road from Leland Road to Moxon Way. Again, we've identified a sewer master plan project through here. This, this section of Myers Road is not currently serviced by sewer lines, so we want to make sure that that's incorporated. And this, this segment here was one of the areas that we've identified as a priority project, just it's, there's no, no shoulder, it's got steep ditches on both sides of the street, so there's some serious need for sidewalks and infrastructure here. And then again, for, for segment four, similar cross-section with sidewalks, bike lanes, stormwater facilities where, where feasible. In addition to doing the, the general segment, we've, we've looked for opportunities to increase some connectivity in the adjacent neighborhoods, both east and west of Lynn Avenue. One of the things that we identified was just a lack of connectivity to and through Singer Creek Park. You know, the park itself is kind of an island with no real way to get to it. The only paved access is from Bell Court, but there's no sidewalk down Bell Court to get you there. So we looked at some issues and ways that we could, you know, yes, thank you, ways to get people to and from the park and through, you know, methods to get up and down the corridor without using Lynn Avenue, so that was...
This graphic is a little confusing, but a lot of that line work, those are projects that have already been identified in either the, the TSB or the Trails Master Plan, so everyone's been looking at this area for a while. So this is sort of a compilation of that, and then where else could we make an improvement?
I think of this map as, you know, I think the project team looked, well, Wallace went out and looked and kind of looked at these dead ends, and I think we were aware some of them were there, but just, you know, realizing where there might be easy fixes to help connectivity happen, walking connectivity more than, more than maybe biking even.
Again, another thing that we've, we've highlighted and we just talked about is access to Gardner Middle School, you know, just lack of sidewalks. Some of these accesses from, from, from the courts here are problematic in that they just don't connect to the middle school through any paved path. There's fences that are blocked, just a lot of, of access issues getting to and from the school. And then with regard to the roundabout, we've looked at a couple of options for a roundabout for, for this intersection, and I went back and identified some of the, the reasons why the, the TSB identified this intersection for a roundabout. One of the big issues is, is Central Point, Warner Parrott Road projects to go to Level of Service F for vehicles leaving Central Point Road in their projected traffic for 2035. And that was kind of the driver, I talked to DKS, who was involved with the traffic projections for this, and they said, you know, I think the push towards a roundabout was more because you couldn't incorporate a second light, lighting system at Central Point and Warner Parrott without impacting the operations of, of the main signal at Leland, Warner Milne, and Lynn. And so they wanted another solution that, that kind of addressed and brought in all these vehicles and brought them around, and that's how they came to, to a roundabout. So we put together two concepts based on sketches that were provided by DKS and fleshed them out to find out what our impacts were through this area. We looked to move the roundabout to the north and west to try and avoid impacts to the, to the minimark at the, the south between Central Point and Leland and the other private property over here, Leland and Warner Milne. So try to avoid, avoid impacts of those properties and fit a roundabout in here that best suits all users. And here's our other concept, and we've kind of moved forward more with the five-leg roundabout than the four-leg, because this presented some safety issues with stacking for vehicles turning left onto Central Point, again, coming off of the roundabout. There's limited space for stacking in this, and you, what you don't want with a roundabout is vehicles that back up into the roundabout, it shuts them down typically.
Well, the whole purpose of a roundabout is to deal with unusual intersections, and you're not dealing with an unusual intersection if you just put a roundabout there. I mean, you've still got the odd leg, so.
Right, right.
And it, to me, it's a perfect location for a roundabout, it's what it's all about, is, you know, short of doing what they did in Portland with the Sandy Burnside thing where they actually cut lanes off and redirected things, which is even weirder, but...
It works.
Yeah, I know, but I liked watching the newbies go off down Burnside instead of turning on Sandy.
It works if you know what it's supposed to be.
They have a lot of signage.
Yeah.
How are we supposed to read our text and the signage?
Right. And so, just kind of moving on to the, the next steps for, for us on this process, we're going to continue with our public involvement process. We've had a number of neighborhood meetings that the city's been attending. We've had our TAC meetings, our open house, which generated a, a lot of, of public comment, the online survey that the city put out. So we're going to incorporate a lot of that. We'd like to, to include Planning Commission comments and what your concerns are into our report. And then from that input, we'd like to finalize our report, make comments and changes to, to our plan as, as necessary, and refine all those alternatives. Come through and, and look at an implementation process and funding opportunities and ways that we could best implement the improvements that we, we see, and then proceed through the legislative process, get Planning Commission approval, get City Council approval, and put this in the books.
So, I know we only, we're just take 20 minutes, we're a little over, but, you know, I think the, overall, the plan, there are segments that are where it's pretty, there's not a lot of challenging questions to be answered. There are some questions about priority. If you live on Myers Road, you feel like you should be priority one. If you live on, if you use Lynn, Lynn Avenue, you think that's the higher priority and don't worry about those people further out, you know? But, I mean, Lynn Avenue presents a fair amount of challenge associated with it, but we also see some opportunities there with squaring up maybe the intersection of Pearl and Lynn. And we've talked a little bit about elimination of Electric Avenue and creating maybe some parking options, maybe some stormwater treatment options, and having, that was our, that's the one intersection with the most safety concerns is just people turning on and off of, of, onto Electric Avenue. So the idea of, of closing that and creating some different use of that space and then working on a, possibly a turn pocket for Charmin even, as people come down the hill to be able to turn there. So, you know, that's, all those, all those considerations, what, what the, we're getting the most comments on is the roundabout. Some people love them, some people don't think too highly of them, and so we feel like the, the, we feel like that's the right solution, but we also want to hear that public opinion. We think the, we think what needs to happen from the city's, is one of the city's things to do is to do a lot more with public education. Roundabouts aren't just about creating a landscape median, they're really about efficiently moving traffic, safely moving traffic. You know, may have more accidents at a roundabout when they first kick the, when they first go into operation, but over the long term, they've proven to be much safer for pedestrians and for drivers. So trying to educate the public about roundabouts is, is going to be something that we're going to try to focus on, assuming that's kind of what we get out of this recommendation is a roundabout.
I totally agree with you, John. I think that a roundabout at that location is the most efficient and obvious solution both for cars, bicyclists, and pedestrians, and I really think that it will work. What I find a little disconcerting is that people fear what they don't really understand. We do that with everything, and I think that if people can see a demonstration of it, like a, maybe a simulation showing how it works, it's, it, it works quite well. I mean, they're, they're everywhere, they are not anything new, it's not something that we just made up because they're, they've been used across the country. I was pleasantly surprised to see how well the one worked in Bend going up to the mountain because that was a very hellacious intersection. To be honest with you, they thought about putting a roundabout at, at Burnside, Sandy, Cooch, 11th and 12th, but there just wasn't enough right of way there to be able to make it work. And the cost to acquire the right of way would, would have been more than the project that we ended, the city ended up doing costs, so that was probably one of the reasons. But it's, it's so much nicer there now, instead of that, there was like a six-way intersection there, but I think, I think it's the way to, I really think it's the way to go.
One of the things that we did her, here loud and clear was if you're going to do a roundabout, it needs to be, you know, needs to be large enough, needs to have the right appropriate number of lanes, needs to be, you know, signed appropriately, markings need to be clear. So, you know, there've been a lot of roundabouts that have been built in our area that, you know, are more like circles, you know, a lot of people...
You mean Portland metro area?
Yeah, in the metro area. So, you know, I think both consultants and communities have learned a lot about roundabouts, and, you know, I think we've got that perfected. So the challenge, we do have some challenges, though. We've got some, a roundabout's going to have some impacts to some, some properties along there, and I think some of them are manageable, others are going to be difficult, but we, you know, we hope to keep those neighbors engaged and keep, keep working on those issues.
I think the ones, the one that I use the most is the one that's, it's past 39th and on Burnside, and they're...
So on Gleason?
Gleason, Gleason, yes. So if you're going, you know, going to go to the right or left, you stay on the inside. If you're going to go on Burnside, you're on the outside lane, and then you just, I mean, it's just a nice little S curve, and there you go, and everybody kind of waits their turn, but it works. So I have a couple of things here. So you're talking about putting sidewalks on, you know, the north side versus south side, and I'm thinking a couple of things that you probably should take into consideration is that on occasion, we do get some weird snow weather here, and the north side of the street would be shadier and probably more hazardous to a pedestrian versus the south side, which might, you know, be sunnier.
Which is also the downslope side.
Which is also the downslope side, but...
So if a car starts sliding, it's going to slide?
We'll take the pedestrian, right.
I think Dave misspoke, actually, it's east and west, isn't it, on Lynn? Yeah, but yeah, that's, that's very important.
Yeah, that's something to take in consideration, and then because there are a lot of portions of this corridor that have these incredibly long straight stretches, what about the idea of incorporating fire truck compliant speed humps with a crosswalk?
Because this is a minor...
No, I'm not asking you to answer me now, I'm just saying, you wanted ideas? I'm just saying, you wanted ideas, I'm throwing it out there. Because I'm very sensitive to the issues of the other neighborhood associations. Basically, I say it every time I come here. Number one issue that we have in our neighborhoods is speed, 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 speed. And I was on Myers Road two weeks ago because I was doing a site visit to an application that we had to review. And I got up to Gaffney and I said, oh my God, a stop sign. Now, I was sitting there for a little while, kind of observing the property, which was off to the, to the left. And most people came to a full and complete stop and then, phew, you know, down the rest of the way. So it helps a little bit. There were few that did the, you know, the light rolling stop, kind of looked and then went on their way. But I'm not suggesting we put stop signs everywhere. But if there's a way to incorporate those things, that might be something to look at. And then probably the other thing that, for, this is more for John, so the storm drainage areas. I have noticed some of the new landscaping that was put in that unfortunately the adjacent property owners are not maintaining them. So if it's a storm drainage facility, is that something the city is going to be maintaining?
If there's a water quality element to it, we pretty much have been dealing with those.
Okay, that's good because I don't want people going around pulling up stuff that they think might be a weed, which is really a, you know, a plant that likes that type of a wet environment. But I can tell you that just as a compliment, people in the neighborhood are totally thrilled about the pedestrian crossing. The only thing I can say, one of our neighbors mentioned to me the other day, John Adams and 7th, is that they're concerned that it might back traffic up. And I said, well, gee, they're just going to have to wait for the pedestrian to cross the street. Not, you know, I think that's the least, I mean, because it's quick. They get across because now they're not hesitating as they wander across. And, you know, unfortunately, we may have to put a few more of those up in other portions of the community just because, as you know, they don't.
There's one proposed on Charmin.
Yeah, they don't pay attention.
My quickie comments are that I think you have to go with the five-way roundabout. I mean, that's what they're all about. It's a big impact, according to your drawing, to the church property. But I think, you know, it's a fairly, you know, it's one, one big property rather than five or six little ones. And as far as the whole like priorities thing, you know, whether we do segment one or segment three or whatever, I think it comes down to probably the will of the city commission to put a budget together. Because it's like, you know, a hundred thousand bucks and you probably have all segment two done. It's, it's, it looks like about a hundred feet of sidewalk and you're 99% done there. And that's like, woo, victory. But you're going to need, you're going to need probably a quarter of a million dollars to buttress the walkway on Lynn where it makes the corner. And then, you know, all the culverts you're going to have to fill up on Myers is going to be the same way. So I think, you know, what, what needs to, I think, happen is either you, you know, recommend to the city commission, this is the budget and this is how long it's going to take to get, you know, segment one, segment two, segment three done. And have them say, we adopt that or, you know, because I think it's infinitely better for the public to see that, you know, this is the plan. As this money becomes available, this is going to happen.
It's got to be done.
And, you know, here's the timeline for it to occur rather than, oh, we got $50,000. We'll put another 10 feet of sidewalk in. It's, I think that would be the worst possible thing. And additionally, most of segment two is done. There's not going to be any SDCs to, to be part of that building project. So I think that's going to have to be city funds. Three and four, you're going to have some SDCs, probably not much in the way of one either. So I think when you come before me again, and definitely in front of the city commission, I think it would be good to have a, you know, a rough budget. I understand you're not going to be down to even the 10,000s with this stuff because some of it's going to be seven, eight, 10 years out. But, you know, it'd be good for the city commission to say, yes, and we're going to go with, you know, segment three, then segment one, then segment two, then segment four, something like that. Just to, to, when we're talking to people, say, yes, it's in the plan, it's going to happen. It's, you know, we're waiting for these three properties next to you to sell and subdivide so we can put sidewalks in front of your house. By the way, there's a hearing tonight. Do you want to go in and oppose the subdivision or do you want sidewalks? You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the choices that citizens always have. And they don't know what the pros and cons sometimes of their decision. It's like, I like that open field next to me. Great, and that's going to always be a gutter. You'll never have sidewalks, you know, so.
A ditch.
Yeah, a ditch.
The ditch, yes.
Anyway, I think that that would be the best strategy to come forward with it. I like the whole, the whole idea and the acknowledgement that we're not going to have bike lanes on both sides and sidewalks and five-foot planter strips. And frankly, I don't, in most of this, because we're going to try to match the look, planter strips are irrelevant. And especially if we're going to pave where somebody's been parking all this time. You know, even though they've been parking on our, on our property and with our, our, you know, because we've been kind enough to let them rather than sticking a sidewalk there, putting another planter strip and taking another five feet away from it just seems excessive, so.
I like planter strips.
I should mention that there's no parking really except for one short segment on Lynn, on the whole thing, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that bit on the west side or east side of Lynn.
Well, the red line you have here on the bottom that you're showing, that's basically people parking in front of their.
People parking in front of their house, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, we aren't adding any parking lanes.
So John, in the report, would it, could it be possible to show, for instance, I'm not sure, I know anymore which portions of Leland and Myers are actually city right-ways or whether we still have that patchwork of county, some county portions along some of those roads?
As far as I know, this is all city right-of-way. I don't know of any fee simple property that the county owns. It's all.
It's all city right-of-way?
City right-of-way, yeah.
So did we get, when we took those over, do we, did we get any compensation from them? Because that's, that was the way we've been doing it is that if we want, they want us to take over a road, there's some.
Right, so there's a, there isn't a road transfer fund. It's not got a lot of money in it.
No, I knew it didn't.
And I don't know that any of these, these streets have been in the city a long time. I doubt that any of these streets were transferred at the time that we were collecting or are still kind of on the list, haven't already been expended if we did collect money, so.
Yeah, I think we, I do recall that we did, that we probably did for Myers. Leland, I'm more out of the loop on that one because that was a county road for.
Yeah, Myers would, if there was any, it would probably be Myers.
Yeah.
Zach, do you have any comments?
I want to dip into that $200 million that Bob has in his pocket.
Yeah, me too.
I hit it.
You hit it, Bob?
I hit it.
Oh, okay.
My wife insisted on it.
Okay.
I walk, I walk from Charmin down to Main Street probably three or four times a week, up and down it. And I would say segment one, it's dangerous. I would definitely put an emphasis on that just for public safety. I mean, that, that curve, visibility is very poor. And you can, people cross the white line all the time, and.
Can you go back to that slide?
Yeah, basically Pearl to Jackson is the priority on segment one, I would say.
How about a big rubber hammer that comes down if they're going too fast, won't conk the car, you know?
It's speed and it's visibility.
Yeah, well, they're, they're in a hurry.
Well, the curve, I used to walk it because I went to Eastham School and my grandmother's at the top of Oak. And we used to call that curve dead man's curve because you had to go around it before you could even go up, yeah, that.
That one, yeah, yeah, that was definitely identified as a safety concern.
There was no place to go. And when I was walking it, it was literally a white line and maybe a foot and then the wall. And that was the safe side because on the other side, the boardwalk was collapsing. And so you could be walking along it and next thing you know, you're swimming with the nutrients. So it's infinitely better now, but, you know, infinity times one is, you know, not that big of an improvement, so.
You survived though.
Yeah.
So I didn't hear much feedback. You know, we have two distinct different proposals. There's alternate A, which has the 10-foot sidewalk and 10-to-12-foot sidewalk, kind of a shared-use path.
And that's the one I prefer.
You know, which might incorporate some additional walls, but it kind of hugs what would be the west side or the side that I think you were, I think Denise, I think you were suggesting it'd be better to have the sidewalk on the other side. But that, that gives walkers and bicyclists an opportunity to stay on a raised sidewalk and, you know, maneuver up there. And I think the, you know, with these kind of improvements, we'd see more traffic, but it's still manageable. I mean, you could still put a bike and a pedestrian on that without problems, especially since the bicycle's going to be moving at about, you know, two or three miles an hour. And, you know, they're almost, they're almost at walking speed. The other, and then of course the downhill, we're just saying, you know, a bicyclist can maneuver in the travel lane. Actually, both these alternatives, bicycles, I guess the bicyclist has a little bit wider shoulder in alternate A. Alternate B has sidewalks on both sides. Now, I think our feedback, and again, I haven't reviewed all of it, but we had about 120 responses to our online survey. It seemed more preferential towards the two sidewalk option. And, you know, my, my favorite's the shared-use path, but I'm curious what you guys think of those.
You know, I was thinking about that as you were going through it earlier. And I, I think I've come to the conclusion A is better for a couple of reasons. One, if, if you go around that corner that Damon's talking about, dead man's curve, the problem I see there is motorists don't respect the line. In fact, they painted the line and about a month later, the line was almost completely worn off. And I guarantee it wasn't rain that wore it off, it was vehicles. The advantage of section A is that most vehicles are not going to jump the curb to go around that corner. So it provides a lot more protection for both the bicycle and the pedestrian than option B does going around that corner. Because you're a lot less likely, if you're the bicyclist, to have a motorist come up behind you and be right on top of you.
Now, the other reason why we've put together alternative A that I want to raise your attention is, is the idea of the shared-use path allows a lot of different types of bike users to use that path. You're not going to get little kids on bikes coming downhill in the travel lane in alternative B.
Just the skateboarders.
Maybe the skateboarders, but not, not the bicyclists. So the shared-use path does allow for, for a wider diversity of riders going up that hill.
Well, and I think the engineering on the outside of A where you don't have to worry about, you know, engineering in the way for a sidewalk and for everything because you're literally over the crick at that point. You're building a bridge over a portion of that curve. So I think it just makes it a little simpler. The other, my other thought though is it just seems, and so I think depends on what you do with, with Electric Avenue. But I would think that right around Pearls, when you'd want to switch from, from the inboard side to the outboard side, so that now you're working up Singer Creek Park and everything, and you're not trying to cross Charmin and Electric and trying to build new sidewalk up that little bit to get to what is a park avenue. If you just, you know, keep the sidewalk on one side and then a pearl, you know, which is going to be a re-engineered intersection anyway, you shift everybody across and now they're, you know, on that side of the road. And that also might provide a little bit of a movement of the traffic. So now it's not the straight shot road, they're, they're swaying a little bit in their, in their coverage. It might create a little constriction and, you know, and create a natural slowdown that could occur. I mean, I know on 7th here that as the parking shifts from side to side, people react and slow and, you know, and it does have an effect of slowing the traffic a little bit. So that might be the same downside is you're now shoving however much pedestrian traffic across the street, across the street, across the street. But again, if somebody's getting a light, that's stopping and slowing the traffic again. So multiple opportunities just with natural activity.
It's difficult, so narrow through there, it really is. And then there's, of course, I don't know if we mentioned, but there's bus stops on both sides on Lynn. So, and I know Triment expressed the desire for kind of improving crossings at those bus stops when there's, so.
It could be that we see again that Singer Creek Trail System meander down through the stream corridor down to Pearl. That would help some of us, yeah.
Just a thought, but I, I like the fact that we're paying attention to this place. It's, in my entire lifetime, it's been a risk and so, thank you.
Your new t-shirt will be coming, says I Survived Lynn Avenue.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
So I have just one more question. Somebody else may have one too, but you, so you talked about reviewing reports and traffic data. And so how much of the work that you've done to date has been actually out there physically looking at everything?
All of our report is out. Everything that we've got published at this point is out.
I apologize for any errors, but it is a draft.
No, that's all right.
So we do have a lot of markups from the city and our own markup, so.
Is that what you meant by out or did you, were you asking, have we been out?
Out, physically.
Like, just at the corner of Pearl.
Oh, yeah, we've walked the ditches on Myers and Leland on more than one occasion. So, yeah, yeah.
I think Wallace was out there before they even had the job looking at.
It's too dangerous for us, don't bid on it.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's real important particularly for the public to know that you've actually been out there physically and seen that because we've had some other applications come before us and we know that people actually haven't been out there. And you've got the public coming in and saying, well, did you see the blah, blah, blah? And we only go, well, you know, we've read the report, yeah, that, that.
That wasn't in the TSP.
Yeah, so I appreciate the fact that you took your life into your hands walking the ditches out there.
I was going to walk on the road, that's for sure.
Bob, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think that the thing that you have to really emphasize throughout the whole project is pedestrian safety. That's the weakest link in the chain right there. They cannot depend on themselves, they have someplace to go to and that's the side. Traffic's going to take care of itself. Other than a head-on collision, you know, they're pretty well safe with their airbags and safety belts and stuff together. These skateboarders are going to take care of people, they are part of people. First of all, you don't see them, they're only before you know it. And, you know, they're going this way, that way. But if we can just emphasize pedestrian safety, you know, wherever you put the sidewalk. That curb's going to protect them somewhat. And there's always going to be the knucklehead that wants to go faster and speed limit. You're always going to have them. What you've got to do is protect that, those kids and those bicycle riders and those pedestrians. If you do that, then, I mean, you've really accomplished something in my judgment. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
If it was safer for more people to walk.
Yeah.
Because everybody, you know, unfortunately, the way the schools have been set up at the far end of our neighborhoods and not close to anything, everybody drives their kids. And that's.
That was a ma, yeah, that was a major discussion point at the open house, yeah.
The traffic tie-ups, when I was over at Gardner not too long ago before school let out, I was just like, oh my God.
So I think one of the concerns that a lot of the planning commissioners here when we're doing public hearings is on speed. Whether it be the posted sign and how do we amend the posted sign or just non-compliance by drivers with excessive speeds, especially coming down Lynn Avenue. And so, you know, I'm sure you guys have thought about this, but it might be something, making sure folks understand, you know, or what are the options for design techniques, especially coming down Lynn Avenue, to try and slow down speed? Whether it be narrowing the width of the drive, you know, just what techniques may be options that could really slow them down coming down that hill? And I noticed, you know, there is another speed sign proposed. But, you know, are there other techniques that we could think about that may be helpful?
And I know the city has, has expressed the opinion that, you know, narrowing those roads is, is doable. And I know on Lynn, the roadway varies a lot from 10 to 12 feet. And really, there's, you know, there's nothing in standard that says you can't go to 11 and that does help with speed.
You know, going back to your option A, it wouldn't hurt my feelings. You know, going back to your option A, it wouldn't hurt my feelings to see that shoulder become a sidewalk, and no shoulder on either side.
Bike lane on either side.
Well, just, you'd, you'd have just a raised sidewalk. One side would be five feet, and the other side's 10 feet.
Well, but the problem with that is, if somebody does break down coming downhill, they have no place to go, whereas this way, they've at least got a shoulder they can pull off and not be dead in the middle of the road.
That'll stop a lot of people, though.
That's true.
It would slow things down.
Yeah, it'll slow them down.
Especially if the next guy doesn't slow down.
That's right.
But that would be, that'd be my only concern about having any sort of sidewalk, is there's no way for that injured car to get out of the way, for whatever reason.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your.
Could we get your vote of confidence?
Indeed.
Right on.
Just say no poll.
Yeah, I think good job, really.
Good job, yeah, thank you.
Just a matter of fact that we're doing something.
Okay, thank you. We'll be back, I guess, for a public hearing at some point.
Yeah, we've.
Yeah, figure out this kid.
Were we able to handle all those questions, Sean?
We have about five minutes till our.
I'm ready now.
Ready? Okay, the planning commission hearing for June 23rd, 2014, is called to order. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will proceed to the first item on the agenda for PC 14-057, proposed annexation of 5.5 acres located at 19588 South McCord Road. This is planning file AN 14-01. Tony, I, I don't need to read the script tonight, okay? So, do we have a staff presentation?
Yeah, I can briefly bring you up to date on this application. Chair Kidwell, thank you. My name's Pete Walter, I'm a staff planner. This application is still under review by planning and engineering staff, so we don't have a recommendation on a staff report for you tonight. Just briefly introduce you to the property. It is located at 19588 South McCord Road, at the intersection of Leland Road and Myers Road. And this is a property that has been within the urban growth boundary since the 1980s. It's five and a half acres, and it has a current comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential. Future urban 10 is the zoning on it from the county. If it is annexed into Oregon City, it will require, that will require both a planning commission and city commission public hearing, and recommendation for approval from the planning commission to the city commission. If the city commission approves it, it will be forwarded along to the voters for a final vote in November, since all annexations in Oregon City are subject to a vote of the people following review of the application by the city. We're recommending that the planning commission open the public hearing, take testimony from any citizens present who wish to speak on this item, and continue the public hearing to a date certain. And when we wrote the staff report, our date certain is July 14th. Think we can complete a staff report in time to do that, and we will be including engineering's comments into our staff report this week for a review on July 14th. And we have a fairly heavy agenda that night, July 14th, is something that we want to talk about.
So we're going to put this on, and this is going to be the cherry on top?
Well, we could continue to July 28th.
We could go to July 28th and, and provide, we'd have to make the decision that night, on July 28th, if we want to make the city commission hearing date in August, early August.
What is on the agenda for the 14th?
Everything.
Metro men's.
The Lynn Avenue corridor plan, Metro Men's Center, assisted living facility on South End, and a wireless pole.
Nothing's going on that night.
It'll be quick.
Give us a little time to work on this, too.
I guess my question is, is what's preventing us from making a decision tonight?
The staff report's not finished.
It's just an annexation, so what does the staff need to report on?
We review annexations against chapter 14. We have to show that there's ability to serve the property with public sewer water, stormwater, transportation systems. And we look at the adjacent properties, what's developed nearby it, is it contiguous? And we also take comment from any agencies that are affected by the proposal, including the county, law enforcement, fire, police, emergency services, and schools. So those are all commenting parties, and plus, we send it to the neighborhood association as well, yeah.
Well, we already know what the school district's going to say, so it's part of the course.
Are there any objections from the applicant to continue it on until the meeting in, in July?
I don't believe so. I've spoken with the applicant this morning, Monty Hurley, about this possibility. Mentioned that we have a very heavy, heavy agenda on the July 14th, and he did not indicate that that would be a problem. We do need to make sure that we hit our city commission dates and our dates for the annexation ballot measure, if the city commission approves the annexation in August. But there is room in the schedule to allow for continuances such as this, so, yeah.
So we, we could continue to the 28th?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is, is there an urgency to make the November election, or is that, is that just arbitrary?
It's free.
It's a free election, as they say. It's the one that doesn't require that you pay, pay a deposit, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
No, thanks.
So, do we have people signed up tonight to make public testimony on this?
I think submitted.
Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this?
I think the applicant's representative is here, but they may not.
So, do we, do we have a motion on this?
I move that we continue this to a date certain of July 28th.
Second.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Next hearing on this will be Monday, July 28th.
And your report will have an aerial of the, of the site?
Since, since we, yeah, since we didn't, weren't going to do anything on it, I did not go over there and look at the property, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
But I will now.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is PC 14-056, proposed zone change from R8 to R6, and a 10-lot subdivision for properties located at 19751 and 19735 Myers Road. This is one that we had heard last meeting.
Correct. So at the last meeting on June 9th, the planning commission voted seven to zero to deny the, to deny the proposed zone change and subdivision. Staff requested that we bring back an additional finding justifying the, the denial. We have a staff memorandum dated June 13th from Ms. Mooseburger, planner for Oregon City, identifying comprehensive plan policy 10.1.1, and additional finding for why they do not comply with the zone change as it was proposed. We would recommend adopting the additional finding, for the findings are fact, and it'll be submitted as part of the notice of decision for this application.
Sort of a housekeeping type thing, or?
Yeah, because the staff report had recommended approval, that the findings, that the criteria had been met, and the commission determined that the lot sizes weren't appropriate within the existing neighborhood.
I recommend that we adopt the findings for ZC 1412, TP 1402.
Well, second, did we want to add anything else to this?
Were there any comments?
Given the other things that we had, had talked about?
No.
Damon says no, but.
I, I thought that her memo covered the things that we had concerns about.
So I was going, I was trying, I was going back through the, the staff report, and, you know, there were, you know, findings about adequacy of facilities, and it wasn't going to increase any traffic, and I'm just trying to figure out how we spin that. Or do we need to spin that, because?
I think you have, I think you have a denial criteria.
Criteria, okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure that the proposed zone change, based on the increase in density, the transportation wasn't failing.
Well, the reason why I said no is in her memorandum. That, that's why I said no. So I, anything else is no with cherries on top, but.
Okay, all right, just checking.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye, is this something we should have?
No, I just, I had an extra copy, so I got.
No, 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 is, this is not something we get public comment on about, we're just, this is our.
The public hearing's been closed.
I just want to make sure that we're not in our eyes, because if denial gets appealed, we want to make sure.
No, these are your findings.
That was, that was the reason I was asking the extra question.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Here he comes.
Here he comes.
The next item on our agenda is PC 14-065.
Five six.
Zero sixty-five.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong spot.
I'm just, I'm just reading. Oregon City Sign Code Update, planning file L14-01. And do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you. So we are requesting, at our last meeting, it went pretty late, and so we continued this item, and the commission requested an additional work session to review the sign code and the outstanding issues from the previous work session. So we are requesting the planning commission take additional testimony, if many citizens wish to testify, and then continue this matter to a date certain of July 28th, 2014. This will allow us to hold our work session tonight after this hearing.
That sounds great.
Do we have anything from the?
Mr. O'Brien.
So are, are we ready for the public testimony?
Come on down.
Has anyone other than Mr. O'Brien signed up for this?
It's the only one I have right now.
Okay.
I think Jonathan has something to say about it.
Tom O'Brien, resident of Oregon City, and interested part, party to the sign update. I, because you're handling this in a work session after this meeting, I think most of the comments that I have, I would just as soon stick around. There are a number of things that are punctuation errors, omissions, additions, those kinds of cleanup things that are probably better handled in a work session. I will have one or two comments, maybe contrary to a couple of points, but I would just as soon sit around and.
If you could just give that sort of thing, like grammar and all of that, to the staff, I, I don't really want, I mean, with all due respect, I don't want to spend time at a work session doing grammatical corrections, when you can just give it to them and they can deal with it.
Amen, amen.
I appreciate it, because I found some, too, and I gave, I gave Laura, I just, I didn't bring them up in public, I just gave them to her.
If a comma changes the intent, then sure, let's talk about it, but if it's just, oh, they capitalized when they shouldn't have, then yeah, that's.
And there's a period missing here, we should have had a semicolon, you know?
There's, in the definitions, when you get down on the first page, about three-quarters of the way down, it talks about incidental freestanding signs. That's not included in the definitions, and it should be. If you're going to refer to it in the document, it should be in the definitions.
Yeah, that's not, that's not grammar.
And I, I can go over those things with Laura. There were a couple of points, as I say, that I think, feel strongly about, and I'll try to get right to those if I can find them.
Tom, one comment I would make is that if, if you've got marked up versions, I would give.
The only marked up copy I have.
Well, I would make a copy and get that to Laura.
Yeah, we have a color copier.
Or, or bring it up, and they'll copy it for you.
I'll meet with her.
So that, that'll just put it on the record.
Your maintenance, on the second page, about a third of the way down, it talks about unusable.
Which page are you on?
Page two.
Page two, okay.
It's about the third or fourth paragraph. It starts government-owned signs, and then below that, the last part, talks about usable. Unusable, I suspect that should be broken, and I would say that in your workshop, you might give some consideration to changing light bulbs, because there are other sources of light these days than just bulbs in the sign industry, so.
Most of them are LED now, yeah.
Might want to provide that upfront.
Light emitters.
Since it'll be another 20 years before we do this.
Lumineers, I think, is the word.
Yes. On page three, right above 1528040, it should be item, and that was scratched out as far as the 4 to 9A, but item J is a new exemption.
Well, I just lost you.
Pardon?
I said I just lost you.
Or a grammar issue.
It's a grammar issue, and I'll cover it.
Yeah, I know.
There's one, I'll cover that with Laura, that keeps repeating through the thing in terms of the text. On page seven, we have a area where it's, for a single property, banners may be in place for up to 30 days, up to twice per year. That, because of the way it states, is going to be very difficult to enforce.
Which paragraph? I'm on page seven.
Page seven, it's just up C1, 2, C2, additional standards for a single property banners may be in place for up to 30 days, up to twice per year. I don't have any idea how you could enforce something like that appropriately.
We must have a different versions, but I don't have that. I'm looking at my hard copy. That's page seven.
Same segment that I just talked about being difficult to enforce is again repeated on page 10, F2.
Yeah, I don't see either.
Which page is that?
Page 10, F2. Page 11, B1. It should be just Arts Commission, not Oregon City Arts Commission. Cover that with Laura. One point I did want to get to.
Actually, on the draft, that's in the system, they have crossed out Oregon City.
Really, okay. I printed this draft offline about four days ago, so it's been changed since then.
No, it hasn't.
On here?
You have the correct one.
Page 14, 3B, and I think this one is.
Which page?
Page 14. Page fourteen, three B. I think this one is a significant one. Where signs placed within the right of way with an adjacent sidewalk. The sign shall be placed within six inches of the face of the curb. You received early on in the process, the final report from the public process. And on page seven of that report, at the bottom of the page, it states CAT members provided additional comments on signs in the right of way, including, regulations should ensure signs in the right of way do not block the space near the curb where people enter and leave parked vehicles and placement should allow for the passage of pedestrians. And then the next portion of it is signs should be located adjacent to the building. We had quite a discussion in the CAT meetings about that. We already have utility poles, parking meters, all kinds of benches and planters and everything else. If you have a passenger in your car now, in many areas of the area where these A-frame signs are used, you can't get the passenger out of your car without stopping out in the traffic lane and letting them get out first before you park.
Happened to me.
And that was why we, why we unanimously felt that way.
Yeah, happened to me yesterday.
Yeah, and it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, and I guess my thought on that is there's already a bunch of obstructions there. So if you put the sign next to the building, now you've got people zigzagging, walking down the sidewalk.
I'd appreciate Jonathan's input a little bit if he could. One of the key issues is how are these signs being used? What's the purpose of them by the merchant who's putting them up there? And it seems to me that it is to attract both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. If the parked vehicles block the viewing of it, it does absolutely no good for the merchant in relation to appealing to a motoring public.
Right.
Whereas if it's up against the building, they might stand a chance that it can be seen. So.
Or they just might not put it out and that'll be one less thing cluttering the sidewalk.
To continue on in that frame of mind, we have in here on page fifteen, we talk about, at the very bottom in the footnote, it says community advisory team suggested changing this to allow the sign in the right of way between business hours. It currently reads twelve hours per day. And that could be interpreted to mean whether the business is open or not. I've taken a lot of pictures on New Year's Day along Main, along Washington, along Seventh of A-frame signs, no business is open. But yet they're out there doing exactly what we're trying to design this not to do is to make the city a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. And I think it's reasonable that if someone has their business open, they should have the opportunity to put the sign out during the period of time that they're open. Some businesses are open lengthy period of time.
I couldn't, couldn't agree with you more. There are a number of signs in, in our neighborhood where they are not open and they're still sitting out there.
And the argument is that, you know, what about political signs? Well, I don't see anyone in the political realm taking a sign down after twelve hours and putting it up again the next day. I, I don't think it's a valid argument. So do with it what you want, but those are just my comments on it.
Do you have any opinion about where we have a curb extension, about somebody throwing their sign on the, the very edge of the curb extension?
You know, I, Denise, like you, feel that the current sign code was fairly well thought out. It needed to be updated a little bit in terms of there's new technology in the sign industry. But enforcement is a critical issue. You know, there's a plan here to allow for not having them on those bump outs because it does impede traffic, it does impede visibility at those intersections and I think that's good. As far as I'm concerned, and I was in the sign business for twenty some years, I don't think that A-frame signs do a very effective job of communicating the message that people wish to communicate to the public. They would be better off with a blade sign on their building. But I'm not going to fight City Hall on that one. You know, I just, you know, if they want them and they don't care how crappy they look, to me, it says, I do not intend to be in business very long, therefore I don't want to invest in a sign. It reminds me of a sign I saw in downtown Minneapolis a number of years ago. A furrier had a sign, felt tip marker on a piece of corrugated in his front window. Furs cleaned and stored. Now I ask you, who in their right mind would take their furs, gentlemen?
That's a good, that's an interesting observation.
Your sign tells your image. It tells about your company.
Yes.
Let's see. Page sixteen, and again, I'll cover this with Laura, on C two point three, approval of a budding property owner is required. I think they mean adjacent property owners rather than a budding, I'm not sure. So I'll cover that with her.
Which, which item is that?
It's three.
Item C two, two point three.
It's actually three. It's item three, but it was two.
Oh, okay, two was scratched out, I see. Okay. Item three, approval of the budding property owner is required. I think it probably should read adjacent, but what do I know? Again, the lighting issue on page nineteen under D, at the under fifteen one forty. D shall replace burned out bulbs on all signs and supporting structures.
Burned out lighting.
Malfunctioning lighting. I thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
I'll still stick around and.
Yeah, and do please give a.
Yeah, you gotta have somebody who's looking at it from, from that standpoint, because I'm sure they've looked at this so many times, you can't, you can't see the forest anymore.
You know how many times I've looked at it? It was just, this week I had to give it a month's rest to go back and look at it again.
Thank you. I think we did too.
Helpful.
Jonathan Stone?
Ooh, he's serious. He's bringing the computer.
He wrote all his comments, though.
You what?
I said, you wrote all your comments, though.
Just making some quick notes. Jonathan Stone, Director of Main Street, Oregon City. So I just had some, listening to the comments that were just made and also follow up on some things that I just wanted to reinforce. Then also, the city commission made some comments offhand at a recent meeting that sort of begs a question to the planning commission with respect to murals. So, as some of you know, Main Street, Oregon City just secured a grant to install banners on light poles throughout downtown. And it's still a little bit unclear to me how that is addressed in the code and to allow something like that to happen. And perhaps I'm just, I was just on vacation, I'm re-familiarizing myself with the document. But I, I just searched light pole in the document and I only found a couple of mentions that didn't really specifically talk about that, that type of application in, in the right of way. So was hoping for some clarification. And then with respect to A-frames as clutter, some retail experts would say that A-frames are a sign of vitality and things that are happening. I, I do agree that maybe there's better use of A-frames than some of our businesses are doing them. But that's an education point because it's not, then you're getting to content. And so that maybe the city could identify partners such as Main Street to help educate our retailers on the best way to use A-frames that communicate the sort of ancillary messages, the temporary messages that A-frames are best at communicating. You do see downtown now that A-frames are doing a mix of wayfinding and temporary message signage. And that's something that Main Street is looking to help downtown address once the sign code is sort of figured out. And that, and you can see it with some of the new businesses that have come in on Sixth Street. It's still kind of no man's land on the other side of Seventh Street in terms of being able to attract people past the bridge. And so they asked me about A-frames and I said, well, they're, they're not legal right now, but they're not enforced. But the code is coming through the pipeline and so we've sort of just taken a wait and see approach because once the code is better understood, then we can work with business owners to help them understand how to maximize their signage program within the, the code that is allowed. But it does bring up a point in terms of placement and, and I noticed that the graphics in, in the new proposed code do talk about no A-frames in the corner like, like Lady Bird and some of the other businesses are doing now at the corner of Seventh and Main. And it seems reasonable to me because A-frames in that respect are not supposed to be wayfinding signage. But we'll work to help those businesses understand how to address that. But I do have a question because we're talking about A-frames obstructing, getting out of cars, getting, or obstructing the path of travel, something that is not addressed formally. And is similarly a situation is other furniture, other sort of merchandise, chairs and tables and whatnot. All things that we want to see in the streets great because it says that businesses are here, people eat here, all these sort of visual cues, this idea of show, don't tell. When you can not have a sign and do something else that demonstrates what's going on there, that is a good thing. But all of these take real estate in, in the right of way. So just keep that in mind that if you're going to make a ruling on A-frames, then it, it has sort of sister problems or brother problems that, that have to be considered in tandem, probably. With respect to lit signs inside buildings, my, my question is, are we now regulating open signs? Or the, the, the open signs that have, you know, O-P-E-N, O-P-E, and all those kinds of things?
I think the moving ones are not allowed.
Right, so I just want, I guess I'm asking for clarification because that, very quickly, if, if it's going to be enforced consistently, all of a sudden, you know, fifty percent of the businesses in Oregon City are going to have to buy new open signs.
Don't you just take out the little gizmo so that it stays on all the time and isn't moving?
I honestly don't know how they work, but I can find out. I'll go ask a couple of people how their, their moving signs work and see if they can have a static function. But even still, because they're, right now, no sign that is on the inside of the building is regulated. But now we're saying that lit signs on the, that are facing outwards.
It's always been that one.
If you have, yeah, it's always been in the code. If you have a sign that's moving or flashing or whatever, whether it's inside your building or outside.
Flashing, but, but I'm talking about just, just statically lit.
I think.
So like a neon?
I don't think we've regulated those. It's the ones that are doing something like O-P-E-N. That, that's currently regulated now and was regulated under the current code.
But the neon beer signs and the open signs that are just on are fine.
Fine, yeah.
Right. But maybe this, I misunderstood a while back, but I thought that now the new code is saying a lit sign on the inside is now, is considered in terms of your wall sign square footage.
I don't think so.
Okay, sorry, thinking of my imagination.
It wasn't our intent.
Okay.
I'll put that.
It should be.
Well, bring it up.
And I guess that gets to the question of like a furniture store with a TV on in the front.
Well, that was my next point, is that you're seeing a few businesses downtown and I'm pretty sure probably elsewhere in Oregon City where they're conveniently orienting TVs to the window. You know, which could, would be maybe appropriate for a real estate office or something like that, doing a slideshow of the different properties that have available. Just want to make sure that whatever we're doing impacts that appropriately. Then inside the current proposed version, it says murals are not allowed on residential buildings. In the future, say downtown, if there's mixed use buildings, how does that impact that? Does that mean?
We're talking residential zones.
Residential zone?
Isn't that what you, is that what we, I thought that was our intent.
Mixed use building isn't a residential.
Residential building, yes. A mixed use building's not a residential building.
Sure, but let's say we had a residential, let's say they turn.
Somebody builds an apartment complex or condos.
Right downtown.
Yeah.
Would, could they on the backside of the building, building facing ninety nine E put a mural?
I, I can't see that it would be a hundred percent residential building downtown. I.
Likely, but I just.
I, I think at this point, the answer is they could not. They would have to come to us for.
For review.
Okay.
I wouldn't object to one if it, but, you know, again, it's at this point.
And I guess my last comment was just sort of to reiterate what the commission was wondering the other day about murals as a way to dress up ninety nine E. And I wasn't sure if the planning commission had any thoughts about the commission's thoughts on murals as, as a beautification tool on our sort of not so good looking faces.
Back in the old days, I was on the mural committee. As a matter of fact, staff, if you want my, I found my file. If you want my file, you're more than welcome to it because it didn't seem like anybody had any of the documentation from the mural group. But I think, I think it would be very appropriate as long as they are, you know, like the current ones done tastefully. They represent, you know, factual history and it's, you know.
They're big enough to be seen.
Big enough to be seen.
Squint and.
Yeah, because I, you know, if you've seen, if you've been to Centralia, they have them all over the place and all, and all different fringes of the building and many other communities do and they, there's, they're, they're great. I don't think of that as a sign because they're not.
Better than a solid wall of gray.
Yeah, they're not advertising something.
Sure. So then I guess my last point is to reiterate again the concern that the tax lot measure for the quantity of A-frames is inconsistent with the number of businesses downtown and that if you were to regulate it differently or allow it for every business and primary business entrance, that you won't end up with a proliferation of A-frames downtown. That is probably not going to happen. But that Bush is the most obvious example. Five storefronts, five businesses. And right now, I believe McNulty's probably uses an A-frame on occasion, Nebiolo uses an A-frame on occasion and Bush's uses an E-frame on occasion. And so if that building was delineated into similar sized tax lots, this can be found elsewhere downtown, that they would be allowed those signs, but since they're one large tax lot, they would not be allowed to have those three signs. So the implication of the wording is not consistent. So if there was another way to do it and say, one per tax lot or not more than one per hundred feet or something like that, then first come, first served, then you're being more consistent and at least putting a number to what you mean by too many. And that way, so on those larger lots that have multiple storefronts, the property owners can, you know, work with their businesses to figure out the best allotment of those signs. If, let's say in the case of Bush, they, in the hypothetical I just presented, ended up meaning they could have three instead of five, but more than one. That, that would be something that they could work out.
Can you tell me what section it is you're referring to? Because I'm.
How, how does that work? Because I think the thing we were talking about, if you're talking about the business, you know, there are some people who have offices upstairs. So do they get an A-frame on the sidewalk too? I mean, should, should they get one too? I'm just.
Well, I mean, in, so.
Are we only counting ground floor?
The two, the two extremes in, in my mind are what the current presentation says is one per lot, per, per, per a property face.
Do you have the page number of this?
He's getting there, he's getting there.
I'm searching it.
Distracted him. Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Bottom of thirteen, fifteen, point two eight, point one zero zero, signs within the right of way.
Hate this thing.
So it's A one A, there it says one.
Hold on, we're scrolling rapidly.
Some of us are not scrolling at all.
Just use your data.
It doesn't.
It hates doing everything.
Doesn't like me.
Thirteen and we're going.
Okay, page thirteen.
Bottom of the page. One A-frame sign within the prop, right of way per property frontage.
So the variation in that statement is the narrowest of lots, which maybe is fifteen feet or twenty feet, to the widest of lots, which is a half a block. So, or in the case of, I'm, there's, you know what I'm saying? So that, so the one extreme, well, the, well, obviously an extreme is none, but the, another extreme is one. extreme, well, obviously, an extreme is none, but the, another extreme is one. The opposite end is, is many as you want, but you could do one per primary business entrance. So in the case of upper-floor businesses, then that primary business entrance would be the shared door, in which case, then, they get to figure it out amongst themselves, how an A-frame could be used, if any. And I was actually just talking about this with the Bush family earlier today. Well, do any of your tenants upstairs have a need for an A-frame? Like, they're mostly lawyers, why would they need an A-frame? They probably wouldn't. But you could imagine where one would be appropriate, say, for a massage therapist, or something that has an upper-floor tenancy, that, you know, it's not like they can just hang an open sign, you know, on a shared door, that maybe an A-frame would be an appropriate option for them to say-
And see, and that's the part that I'm concerned about, because if you're a massage therapist, you're doing, people aren't just walking in off the street to see you, unless you're advertising it. I mean, I'm just saying hypothetically. So again, it gets back to the, to, to the one extreme that Tom is saying, A-frames may not do what people think they're doing, but everybody thinks they have to have one, because the other guy has one, to what are they really trying to convey, and what, what is their real purpose? You know, some people are putting drink specials on theirs, you know, on the cover of this thing, you got knee below saying, "Open, 2 to 10, happy hour until 5:30." I mean, I don't know if I could read that if I was in a car, but if I was walking, yeah, I could see that. But, you know, again, it's, I don't know. I have, I have a real sort of mixed feeling about them.
And I agree with you that there's some good uses, and there's bad uses of A-frame signs. But when we're specifically talking about number-
Yeah.
-of them, and then you could talk about use separately, but the number of them, you know, the, I would say sort of a maximum would be one per business entrance, or primary business entrance, which, in the case of the Bush building, would be Roots, McNulty's, Bush, their second-floor entrance, and then Nebiolo would make five potential signs that would have there. But as we already discussed with the Bushes earlier, none of our upper-floor tenants are probably gonna want one, because it doesn't serve their business need. And, you know, so you're not gonna end up with, it's highly unlikely that you would end up with five in that instance. So all I'm asking is that, if there's another way to word it that is a bit more, you know, the commission's actually making a decision about unit of measure between the signs, just like the code I was reading elsewhere. At one point, it was regulating how many, how often you can have a blade sign, right? So why can't you do the same thing for A-frames?
So basically, you're suggesting that we identify the spacing of the signs that's permissible, like one for every 50 feet, or one for every 100 feet, or something like that, as opposed to just generically, same for the property frontage?
I mean, I think something, it's nice to tie-
It has to be an or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it's an or situation.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you'd end up with three buildings in 100, with 100, within 100 feet, and if we say only 100, then one of them has to be the first guy out there, and he screws his neighbors.
Okay, so it's either or.
Yeah.
Right. You've gotta weigh this against the public safety, using a public sidewalk versus the need for advertising of a, of a business. Well, where do you draw the line?
You carefully regu, you carefully describe where and how a sign can be placed, so that it is in the safest possible location, and then that's, that's how it's managed. I mean, downtown, they don't necessarily place them correctly now.
That's not the most clear one.
And once there's a determination in terms of what the best possible placement is, and once they're permitted, I imagine the permitting process will say, "You can place this here, here, or here, and that's it." And then the business owner walks away knowing exactly what they're allowed to do with that permitted sign they have.
So what you're asking for is a uniform application of the law, of the ordinance, of the regulations or standards?
Correct. And so the, the draft code here already includes a couple of diagrams, saying, "This is how you can place a sign, so that it leaves the walkway clear." And, and I've seen that done in other cities, and given a little diagram, people can follow a diagram, probably pretty simply.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I just, uh-
Before you ask questions, do you have anything else? Okay, great. Go ahead.
I'm just curious if you, with the A-frames and frontage thing, have you compared that to the wall signs and frontage?
Restate that.
Well, we have, in our code, addressed how you have seven businesses in one frontage. I'm just, I've blown that out of proportion, but, and we have a maximum signage and a maximum allocation of signage. And I'm just now relooking at it, so I'm-
Which section are you looking at?
Uh, page seven.
Yeah, that's the old page seven.
28, 15, 28, 80. And the first bit's about wall signs. And I was just now looking at it to see if there was some way we could adapt that for your A-frame versus-
So that's on page eight of the current draft.
I see it, yep. So that's section A there?
Yeah, I just, because I know that that was a concern, that you have multiple businesses on, you know, but, you know, who gets how much wall sign space? So I was just wondering if there was a way that it could be adapted, if we could adapt that standard to an A-frame, but it doesn't quite read right, so.
So what this section is saying is that essentially, you're allowed a minimum of 20 square feet, and then beyond that, you're allowed one square foot per linear foot of storefront.
Yeah, and it doesn't say what I intended it to say.
What we might, thought we might want to say, yeah.
What if you were to designate specific areas for the A-frame signs? So in other words, if you have 100, this would be easy for enforcement, too, because it's either in that little zone, or it's not. Say, if you have a 100-foot lineal frontage of store, you get three signs, you know, maybe one sign per every 33 feet, or whatever. You have little corners, or a little brass plate where the sign goes, and-
Or a different colored square in the sidewalk.
And an tenant of the buildings can decide who gets to have the A-frame this week, or this month, or whatever it is they have going on.
Or it's part of the contract of the-
Yeah, and then they can decide to put the signs there. Just an idea.
Well, the most logical place in my mind is that the A-frame is near the entrance, because the A-frame is a call to action, right, surpassing an entrance.
Sure, and you can certainly establish the little zone there in certain, in certain respects, too.
So you can't see it, because you go to the orange park there.
You can put them anywhere.
Well, and, you know-
But you'd have a certain number of them allocated to each, you know, unit of lineal building frontage, and then you'd solve the problem of this, all this arbitrary stuff as to where the signs are actually gonna go, because we could, we could talk about putting signs and developing code to where, where we put the signs, but again, you know, it's been brought up that it's the enforcement aspect that's difficult, and maybe this'll make it a little easier. I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I haven't thought it all the way out, and I'm not sure whether or not this, this concept would actually work, but-
Well, it seems like perhaps a distance from the entrance to the bill, to the business would make sense. You know, my personal opinion is the A-frame, especially if we have parking along the curb, is only effective for pedestrians. If you're driving along, and you're trying to see an A-frame, that's gonna be a traffic hazard. So the most logical place is within the vicinity of the entrance to the business.
Right. I mean, it's, it's fair to think of A-frames as pedestrian signs. Right now, downstairs are being sort of molded, you know, used in both ways.
And in reality, they could actually be considered a potential distraction to drivers if you're trying to read something on an A-frame. I like Tom's comment, if you're serious about your business, you know, pay for a blade sign on the, on the building, and get it up high enough that you can see it when you're driving by.
We're walking.
Are these things as functional as we think they are, or we're trying to be convinced that they are?
I think they're great for restaurants, you know? It's, it's nice to know what the specials are when you're, when you're walking by.
Yeah, or when happy hour is, or whenever.
Yep.
Yes, I'm, there are always, there's alternative forms of signs, and so ultimately, the question here is, does, do A-frames have merit, have, have business merit for our businesses? And that, I mean, so if you imagine wandering down the street, a restaurant, you know, might have a menu box, and maybe they'll post their specials or something there. I guess most, if you, if you think of any of the sort of quaint, sort of traditional downtowns, of places that you like to go, pretty much all of them that I can think of use A-frames, or some other sort of sidewalk-placed sign during their business hours. And so the precedent is pretty strong in terms of, of that, you know, and these aren't necessarily, if you think of Alberta, I think of, of, you know, especially other restaurant-heavy districts, or, you know, places that have retail, that might be having specials or something like that, that it, it's a, I just wanna make sure that we're not sterilizing-
Right.
-and in the, in the name of aesthetics. And obviously, we need to address, address safety issues with respect to pedestrians, cars, vehicle traffic, but that, we need to balance that with a sense of vibrancy, and that things actually happen here.
I think we're just trying to get a handle on the need, you know? We're trying to visualize the type of businesses that would need-
I think the simple answer is, A-frames work, or they wouldn't exist.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, they've been around for way too long. The, I think, to a certain extent, they would've largely gone extinct if they didn't produce some sort of result, so.
Or at least a perceived result.
Yeah, I, I think it has a lot to do with the fact that Joe Schmo has one, and, oh, I better get one. Because most of the restaurants that I go to, if they have a special, they have a little chalkboard in the window, or they put something in the window, and you're strolling by, and you can look and see what their menu is without having to go in, you can find out what the specials are, and you know that they're open because their tables are out. Nobody that I know gets to leave their tables out all day and all night long, they bring them in. So, you know, the best advertising to me is, for example, there's a shop downtown, I know they're open when the furniture comes out in the front of the store.
No, but not all businesses have the luxury of pulling-
I would agree.
Pulling their mattresses out, or whatever the case may be.
Well, he does. He doesn't put his mattresses out, but he puts little chairs out, or whatever.
Right, 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 right. And, and, but not all businesses have the licensing, or whatever, to say, put tables out, or something like that. But that, it is, but it goes to this idea of show don't tell. A, a sort of static sign that is a blade sign up above, eventually becomes part of the-
Background.
Background. And it's, it's largely an ineffective sign when you're trying to communicate to a population that sees you regularly. Now, if you're, if you're coming down to downtown, or somewhere else, for the first time, then you might notice all of these things, because you're looking for them. But in the case of somebody that's coming down all the time, it becomes part of the background, you notice things that change.
Except, the flip side of that is, if I'm coming down regularly, I already know where you are, and I don't need the sign. Or if I'm coming down looking for something I've never looked for before, I'm gonna see all the signs. So that doesn't have a lot of merit for the regular commuter, because if they're looking for you, they either know where you are, or they need your sign. And if your existence is an A-frame behind the van, then I'll go to the next guy. So blade signs have value, even to the everyday resident. But, you know, and I don't, but the thing is, we're not really arguing about that, or we're not discussing that, we're talking about A-frames, and I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how to reconcile your original question, which is what started this whole thing, which is, if one guy happens to own a whole city block, and he's got five businesses across that city block, how does he, you know, how does he advertise? If nothing else, the new guy, you know, or the two new tenants, who's, you know, wanna say, you know, "We're here, we're open," you know, or, "It's, you know, Free Will Tuesday, and, you know, come on in, and we'll, you know, review your will," whatever it might be. So, you know, I'm just not quite sure how to deal with that sort of thing, if you've got a door, you've got a sign, that seems excessive.
Would, would input from retail experts on this matter, in terms of the merit of A-frames, help put context?
I, frankly, I don't think it's an issue of merit. I think we've all recognized that there is some merit there. That the question really comes down to exactly what you said, it's a matter of aesthetics, and are they proliferating to the point where they become clutter?
Yeah.
So, so there's the balance between saying no, which is what the current code says, or saying, "Yes, we can have some, but not let it get completely out of control." You know, I, I went to Europe last year, and I honestly don't remember seeing any A-frames in any of the big cities I went to. I went to Rome, and Florence, and Venice. I, I don't have a picture in my mind of seeing-
Venice, they had to-
Not a single one. And, you know, the signage, they had a lot of signage, but they, they had other means of promoting themselves, and it was effective, because there was a lot of business, and a lot of pedestrian. So I don't think we're having a debate about no A-frames here. I think we're just talking about what makes sense. And I think your point is good, that maybe there's an imbalance if one property owner owns the whole block, and another property, or another block has five different property owners. So that, that's something we can talk about, but I'm thinking that's probably more appropriate for us to get into during the work session.
It's all good, it's good points, thank you.
I think if you, once we remove the corner signs, the sense of clutter's gonna decrease a great deal downtown, so.
Great. Thank you.
You, you're talking about the ones on the curb extensions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And Tom had a response.
Tom, did you have another comment?
Got to do it up here, you got, you know the rules.
Yeah, I couldn't find it real quickly, but within the, the current revised code, we talk about limitation of signs per frontage, and those kinds of things. For example, the Oregon City Shopping Center, they've been in violation for several years, and they keep coming forward and asking for more. But, you know, at some point, you look at it, and you say, as you said, Jerk. I go to Europe every other year. I see pedestals out there with menus on them, I see all kinds of things for foot traffic. An A-frame sign that simply says, "Open," isn't doing anything. I'm gonna sign on the doors, it's open. It's either open or it's closed. But within here, I think if you look at what's already in here, you can probably come up with some terminology that would be suitable for Seventh Street and for downtown. And I agree totally with Jonathan, it's an education process. You know, Phil Yates has got an A-frame out, with lettering this high on it. At 30 mile an hour, people can't read that. I used to sell graphics for trucks, and if you didn't have an eight-inch letter, you couldn't read it.
Yeah.
Right. And, and frankly, I think it's, it's a combination, as we've talked about in numerous other hearings on completely different subjects, but it comes down to the education, as you're saying, but also enforcement. So we have an existing sign code, code that nobody respects, because it's not being enforced. So that enforcement component has to go hand-in-hand with having regulations that make sense. Thank you.
This is a hard part of the code.
Okay, Tony, anything else on this, before we adjourn the public hearing?
Do we need to date certain it to the 28th? All right, I move that we continue this to a date certain of July 28th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Besby.
Aye.
Ms. Henkin.
Aye.
Ms. Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Thank you.
See, we saw these in Albany, and Jonathan didn't want them.
So we're filling up July 28th now.
Yeah. So what I guess is-
See, what I guess is-
There's a method to the madness.
Okay, do you have any communication for us?
Not at this time, I was gonna let you know, the upcoming July 20, or July 14th, and I already let you know, we have Portland Men's Center and Assisted Living Facility on South End, a wireless pole, a conditional use out at the school, McLaughlin School, then Lynn Avenue Corridor Plan.
What, what?
A cell tower.
A cell tower. For the 14th of July.
We have a cell tower?
Mm-hmm.
Application for somebody wanting to put one in?
Mm-hmm.
Or it's gonna look like a palm tree.
We don't, we don't have any palm trees that are appropriate for Oregon weather.
It's gonna be in the shape of a giant pioneer, I think.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
How about a smoke stack?
With a hat.
How about a smoke stack?
Tony, do we have any more?
And then on the 28th, we have a work session for the sanitary sewer moratorium, the annexation that we just continued tonight, the sign code, and then the cell tower will also be heard on that night as well.
Where is it? Where's the cell tower?
It's on the McLaughlin School on South End Road.
Okay.
And also remind you that on July 8th, we have a joint work session, that's a Tuesday, with the City Commission, on the sanitary sewer master plan, so.
July 8th, Tuesday?
Yes.
What time is that?
Usually 5:30, but I'll let you know once we have that agenda finalized, and potentially we may have the strategic document for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
So would you go over that one more time on the 14th, because I was, I got stuck on the cell tower thing and didn't write anymore.
The legisla, most likely we're gonna have the legislative process for the Lynn Avenue Corridor that you just saw tonight, the Portland Men's Center, an assisted living facility on South End, and then a wireless new cell tower out in South End.
And where's that again? On Lynn? On Lynn Avenue?
Cell tower?
Assisted living.
Oh, that's in South End.
Oh, South End.
In 50 South End. Your section of Amanda Court in South End. Any other communications? Okay. And we will be adjourned for the Planning Commission hearing. I suggest we take five minutes for-
Yes, sir.
Oh, God, here's the menu.
Sacramento, Riverside.
Okay, so we'll commence the work session for the Oregon City Sign Code update.
Okay, thank you.
Ooh, the chip with chocolate brown is Sunday.
So at our last hearing, so obviously we've heard some additional comment during the public hearing tonight, some items you may want to discuss, at our last meeting, we kind of left it, there was a, there seemed to be quite a bit of consensus throughout the document, but there was, we wanted to revisit residential, these own properties, and I think Denise had some concerns about the amount of signage allowed in a residential zone, and so I think we were gonna come back and revisit that after we all kind of stopped in that night and had a chance to think about what was, what was the option. And so when we get into, on page five is the start of Signs in Residential Zones, was that one sign is allowed for each frontage not to exceed a maximum of three wall signs. A wall sign is prohibited if there's a freestanding sign along the same property frontage except in the R2 zone. So I think the last time was the concern about the, could you have a freestanding sign in a residential zone, in an R10 zone, for example, an R10 associated with a home occupation, say. There were some concerns about why would you need to advertise in a home occupation?
Home occupation.
Because you're technically not supposed to be attracting retail, it's more like you're an attorney or a real estate office type of a situation, or chiropractor, doctor.
We have a provision for multifamily stuff.
Chiropractor.
No, you're more like a, an accountant who does taxes at home, but people don't generally come to your house. If you're, they were a chiropractor, you'd be having-
You can have someone come to your home.
People come to your house.
So the way the current code is written, that's what we allow, so, you know, is there, is there a desire to limit that in the residential zones, or?
And that's on page five?
Yeah, it's where it starts at the very bottom of page five, and then the majority of it continues on page six is the meat of it.
In particular, B is the one that you had the-
Yeah.
So B, freestanding sign, was the one that you had the concern about?
Yeah, I think, based on the last one, it was just the opportunity for either a wall sign or a freestanding sign, unless you're R2, you're multifamily, and then you also had the opportunity for the incidental sign, so I think your concern was just the number as well as what they could be.
Yeah, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is, you know, if I'm in an R10 zone and I have a church across the street from me and they are a conditional use in that zone, obviously, I think it's appropriate for a church to have a freestanding sign and maybe a wall sign, because, you know, it's the whatever it is church. If I'm a resident, I'm, what I'm having the hard time with guys is I don't see any need for a, a house to have a freestanding sign. And they should have to go through a permitting process if they are having a home occupation, because then that gets them into another category, so they should have to go through some sort of review if they want to do that. I just, I'm trying to imagine, you know, other than, for myself, you know, I have, I have, I have a small sign in my front yard that says, "Please slow down, don't speed in my neighborhood." It's in my flower bed. And whether anybody sees it, I don't know, but at least it gives me some peace of mind. But, you know, during political campaign season, I might have five little campaign signs in my flower bed, but once that's over, they're gone. And other than that, it's a house. You know, I'm not operating a business, I don't, you know, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to reconcile that. I'm not saying everybody's gonna run out and put a freestanding sign in their yard, but-
Well, here's, here's something I could see happening in McLaughlin neighborhood.
Okay.
I own a historic property.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a sign on my, on my property that says it's the, the Maybe House, 1856. And I have a freestanding sign in my yard that says, "Historic House Tours, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, 2 to 4 P.M."
Okay.
Is there anything wrong with that?
You know, the thing I'm kind of hearing Denise saying, and I don't disagree with, is that maybe they shouldn't have the outright permission to have that sign, but maybe it's a conditional use. They have to get, they have to come in-
I'm not even charging for the tours, I'm just letting people come in and see my historic house, because they're interested in wainscoting. I mean, or I'm living-
To me, that would, even if you're, you know, to me, you'd be on the borderline of can, even if you're not getting paid for it, you're, you're kind of getting into the business category to me.
Okay, how about I live out on Myers Road, I get annexed in, I have a blacksmith shop because I used to have 40 acres and horses, I want to keep doing my farrier business, but now I'm an R10, and I want, I want my sign out front that says, "Farrier Service Available, By Appointment, Call Blah, Blah, Blah."
Well, there's one in my neighborhood, it's the-
A farrier?
No. A freestanding, about 12 square feet, sign, and it's a care facility or group home or something like that. And it, there's no, there's no wall sign, it's just the freestanding sign.
In their, in their front yard?
In their front yard, yeah.
For like daycare or something like that?
Yeah, something like that.
Typically, what I've seen is a one by two for people that are quote unquote hanging out their shingle for a, for a home occup. And that's what they get.
Yeah, if they're, if they're running daycare, then that's a home occupation.
Just so if you're looking for somebody, if they're looking for the lawyer, they have, you know, attorney up on the house.
I kind of like the idea, you know, maybe it be conditional use instead of just outright permitted.
What are you going to-
For a sign?
Review for a conditional use, right?
I don't want to go, I'm not saying I want to go there, but you can ask them.
No, I'm just, I'm just posing the question of, you know, if you said it's one by two or two, whatever you say it is, right, two by two, campy, tolerant, five feet, whatever, you know, you could come up with clear and objective standards-
Yeah.
That would protect the integrity, it's not like we're saying you can have anywhere from a monument to 35 foot tall, right? I think we could probably restrict it, because you really want to be reviewing conditional use permits for a sign-
Nope.
For a home.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think if they're doing anything of the sort, whether they're getting paid for it or not, it falls to me in the home occupation category, and they should have to come under home occupation requirements, you know, where they're operating a daycare or they're giving free tours Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, there should be, you know, some review, because I mean, you know, I'm assuming this daycare person, the sign's out all the time, 24/7, right?
Mm, yeah, it's permanent.
What about a salon, I hear a salon in a residence, I see a lot of those, and they, do they fall under the category?
There's, that's a home occupation.
Yeah, but you can get, we're talking about extremes.
I don't think, again, the primary purpose of the house is to have, to live there, the primary purpose is not the business. So the sign-
Yeah.
Needs to be as discreet as possible, and I don't think it's appropriate to have a freestanding sign, it should be on their house.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
So that's, this is where I'm coming from.
I guess what makes it hard too is, what do you do with someone who puts up a for-sale sign?
Well, I mean, that's different.
How can I differentiate the two?
They are in the same category as the political signs.
A real estate for sale sign is not a home occupation.
So that you'd have a section of temporary signs that you have on your house that you want to put up for during political campaigns, during that season, then also if you want to sell your house.
We have that in the, don't we have that in the current code right now? Political signs were exempt-
Content neutral.
Well, no, political signs were not content neutral, but there was an exemption that said during this period to this period, this is when you get to put up your political, it's the same thing, regulation we have about firework stands, you don't get to have your firework stand in the City of Oregon City all year long, you get to have your firework stand from-
I don't think, I don't think we had that for signs that I can recall.
No, I'm just saying for, for firework stands, you can only open for this date to this date.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Because we did not want them proliferating all over town all year long like they do in the southern states, we drive down the road and you can, you can buy bombs at these places, but-
So, Tony, where do freestanding, or where do real estate signs fall on, under this current code?
Freestanding, maybe. Let's just say it's a freestanding sign, I mean, we can't, I can't write a code that says-
I thought there was something in there that exempted political signs.
If you're gonna have a freestanding sign, you have to allow a freestanding sign, and if I want to put on there, "My house is for sale," or the attorney business, or, you know-
Tours.
Slow down.
Damon's Tours.
We don't look at the content.
A for-sale sign would be a temporary sign, though, wouldn't it?
Well, I guess that's my question, is, is it possible to make a distinction between a permanent sign and a temporary sign?
Okay, it says, temporary signs means a sign that will become obsolete after the occurrence of an event or a series of events. Temporary signs include but are not limited to for-sale slash lease signs, garage sale signs, and political campaign signs. I'm reading under the current code.
What's the page?
The current code, you have, you don't have that online.
It's not in here.
No. And it's chapter, let me see, it's under-
So I think that covers the real estate-
1528-020.
The real estate and campaign signs, and then-
Those were, those were temporary signs-
Yeah.
So that you don't have-
What, what's the-
No, we could just have, you know, a shingle regulation for a home.
What's the number?
28-020.
28-020, okay. So if it's, if it's already in here, then we're covered.
I mean, if somebody has a, if their house is for sale, I know there've been cases where a house has been for sale for a whole year because it hasn't sold, but-
I don't see definition of temporary sign in here.
It's usually been because they were, you know, they had changed realtors or something.
Permit those, Tony? Okay, so you're looking under definitions.
Yeah, I was looking under-
And there is no definition of a temporary sign.
Then it didn't get pulled over.
So that got taken out?
Yeah, see, I think there needs to be something in there, because I, I think having the city regulate political signs-
I guess I need to go back and look and see if the attorneys pulled it.
Yeah. If the attorneys pulled it.
I'm not sure why that wouldn't have got pulled over.
Well, it seems to me, that, that's a legitimate distinction, is if, if we have an objection as a commission to a permanent sign in a residential zone, that's different from a temporary sign that would either be a real estate sign or a-
Right.
Political sign that's only going to be there for a limited amount of time.
Yeah, they took, that definition's missing.
So I think that definition needs to be put back in.
It was between tenant sign and, and traffic control and it's-
Yeah.
Seems to be gone.
And so then if we, if we get that back in there, then the section that we were just talking about-
What freestanding or A-frames are covered because it's a temporary sign.
Under the freestanding sign in the residential, we would only allow temporary freestanding signs.
And if they want something else, then it falls under the home occupation thing. So you could have your temporary, I give my tours Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, as long as you don't have it out all the time.
No, I can have it out all summer.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's temporary, may, I don't know. We'll be looking forward to that.
When are you gonna start your tours?
That's what I'm saying, I'm signing up.
My house isn't pink anymore, so it's just, there's nothing to distinguish my house, so.
We could fix that, we could come over and paint it pink again.
Or another color.
Mm-hmm, we have time.
Yeah, it's true, it's all green now.
Well, maybe we could-
Blends in with the forest environment and has minimal impact.
Maybe we could paint some birds on it or something, make it look like a nature house.
We have a comment from the peanut gallery, I mean, from the gallery.
I think what you're looking for is on page six, under C, ancillary signs, because of content, content neutral issues, we had decided that real estate signs fell under ancillary signs, whether it was for an open house on a Tuesday, or whether it was a for-sale sign, and they're allowed two of those, as long as the event is going on.
Yeah, but there's no definition of that.
Why do you need two?
Under C, one.
On page five or page?
Six.
Six, okay, I'm sort of on six, I got-
I have, I have a feeling that the attorneys probably said, without reading the sign, how are you gonna know when the event's over?
Tony, I'm gonna hit this computer any minute now, because I can't make it move, make the pages move.
I had that, I had that same problem last time.
Yeah, but now it's moved where I can't read it. It's either too much or too little. I think I have to do like Charles does, bring my own pad and-
Actually, I'm, I'm getting this thing to move around pretty fast.
Yeah, mine doesn't do that, I can dance it all over the place.
Yeah, it won't, yeah, see, you're highlighting it and making it go away, it won't-
Yeah, see, I have to drag the-
What's wrong with yours?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Tony, we need a work session on how to move through our documents.
We need a mouse, we need mice that work with this, in order, life would be so much easier.
Yes, instead of having to use your finger.
I'm feeling very privileged that my monitor actually works.
Well, you're at the mayor's seat, you have to touch.
You're at the mayor's seat, of course his is gonna work.
Oh, nice.
We're just here in the peanut gallery.
It's good to be the king, you should know.
Okay, I'm almost sorry, I'm almost there.
I, I, I think, you know, my sense is, we're all kind of at a consensus point here that somehow the lawyers need to figure out a way to feel good about temporary signs in residential zones that can be qualified as the ancillary signs.
Well, you can have a, I think there's places where you could have temporary signage all over the city regardless of, you know, regardless of the zone.
Right, but we're specifically talking about the issue of-
Yes, we're specifically talking about residential zones.
In the residential zones, so what we're suggesting is freestanding signs in the residential zones are only permitted as temporary signs.
Now, what about A-frames?
And they're not permanent.
I hate to, I don't hate to bring it up, but says-
Well, they can't be in the ground with cement.
Because I know that, no, I'm serious, though, I mean, there's realtors that do open houses and they have A-frame signs in front of the house to do that.
We had addressed that, we had addressed that part, we identified Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, they, they come and they go, I mean, I've never seen any of them left up in their, you know-
And that was in the right of way, though.
Correct.
They put them in the sidewalk. They lot, they put them in the sidewalk all most of the time.
So that was, when you go under signs in the right-of-way, on page fourteen, where did that go?
I have a question about, while you're looking that up, what about signs that get, let's say it's a for-sale sign, and somebody misappropriates it, covers it up and makes it their business sign, even though you know that there's a for-sale sign under there?
Or a political sign.
Or a political sign, I mean, I'm assuming those things are, those things like that are not going to be allowed, or are currently not allowed and will not be allowed in the future.
Are you saying a sign cannot be modified?
Well, it's not even on this, the ones that I'm thinking of, that I've seen over the last four years, they are on another piece of property, and somebody has appropriated for their own use, which has nothing to do with what that sign was intended to, it was a for-sale sign, and it's suddenly been covered up, or you have a sign where the business changes, and they just kinda put a piece of plastic over the top of it, and now it's the new thing, but the other, the nice sign was underneath, it's just covered up, and it's been that way for years.
Yeah, so Joey, duct tape.
Well, I, yeah, I'd love to say there's duct tape on it, there isn't, but.
So, just want to clarify, is there, there's agreement that we're not gonna allow freestanding signs in residential zones?
Except temporary.
Only on a temporary basis.
Only on a temporary basis.
That's what I'm, only on a temporary basis.
And that's the consensus, but not the total agreement, but I'm okay with being overruled, I think there are times when it's appropriate, but.
So, you know, you, you mentioned the historic signs, so Old Home Forum has been giving people, not giving, but selling them these plaques that we have on our houses that say, my house is Joe Schmo's house, and they're very small, I mean, I suspect they're under-
They're like, they're like one-by-ones.
Yeah, one-by-one.
With, they'll recut out of them and all that, yeah, I've seen, I know you're talking about that. And that would be a wall sign.
So does that care, take care of the churches, too? How are we dealing with that?
Well, churches are-
The churches are generally conditional uses.
They're conditional uses anyway.
And they have to go through review for their signs.
But do they, but I, I get worried that they don't remember the signs, because any kind of a design review or conditional use, they never think about putting up their sign.
But we do.
I don't think you have to go through, what this says is that the standard applies to all conditional uses within a residential zone. It doesn't say you have to get a conditional use for a sign, for a conditional use.
All right.
No, I'm not suggesting they get a conditional use for a sign.
I just hate to be in the situation where, where the church goes through their process, and they forget about their sign, and then they can't have one because, well, or they have to come back to us and talk about their sign, which is-
Yeah, they bring in some big four-hundred-ton granite boulder that's been carved, you know, and it's like, oh, surprise.
Yeah.
So, Tony, what else do we need to cover?
Well, we have the-
Hold on, get my head around this one.
The A-frame issue.
Yeah.
So in commercial zones, are we suggesting that there is a uniform size or maximum, I thought we've had something and there was a maximum?
The size of the A-frame?
Right.
There was, yes.
So are we talking about the little ones, or the ones that are really tall, that are too heavy for one person to even carry?
Depends on the person.
Let's just say it's me.
Okay, so you'd like six by twelve signs?
A-frames?
Yeah.
You mean, so when I'm?
So you can just kick them down the street?
Those would be called signettes.
Signettes, yeah, I like that.
Like serviettes. Oh, he's rearranging the floor.
The stand, the standard one that I see downtown Portland are those big, heavy plastic ones that have, they can, you can have an insert in them, or, I think, well, I think-
They're like five by three.
Yeah, I think this is the, this is the big tall one.
No, that's the standard size looking at.
Yeah, that's the one that, that's the one that practically everybody downtown Portland has.
Right, and that's within the, the way you hold it, or just size.
Yeah, but they have theirs as a chalkboard, theirs as an insert, so they can make it a chalkboard. Like Jonathan, I, I worry a little bit about the, you know, the creative, and I don't wanna pick on this person, but the, the this and that shot has an A-frame, and I thought that the way that they had done it was, was quite creative, it's not one of those white plastic ones, and it was well-made, it's not stenciled, or there's a, some that I've seen that's like, really, you know, like Tom said, you know, you obviously don't-
Yeah, some of those can be pretty bad.
It really looked cheesy, 'cause it looks like they did it with their stencil set and made it, but, so I don't wanna prohibit something like that, and then I guess the gal that spun off from him who's on Seventh now, she, I don't know why she needs an A-frame, she puts her stuff out, and it's like, that's when she's open, she doesn't need an A-frame sign.
Can I just share what you shared there?
Sure.
So just a little quick measuring around downtown, so the case of Bush and some of the other multi-tenant properties.
I have a tape measure on me, by the way.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess these were standard floor tiles, so they're nineteen-point-seven inches square, that, best I can tell, the worst-case scenario, if you were to allow, and this is looking at an average across all of downtown, an average that you would end up, if every single primary business entrance had an A-frame, you would have, on average, an A-frame every fifteen feet, so Safer's is my building, which is Main Street, Oregon City, and the insurance building, it's a thirty-foot wide building, divided by two, on average, a sign for every fifteen feet, and that's, holds true for a number of other.
And that's fifteen feet.
That's fifteen feet, so from the back of the chair to the back of the chair, that's fifteen feet, so granted, on average means maybe there's a little variation in there because the doors maybe are close together or something like that, but just for the sake of demonstration, fifteen feet is longer than it sounds.
That's more than fifteen feet.
This is only sixty inches, so I can't get to-
And Commissioner, this is your work session?
Right.
You've had the opportunity for public testimony, I mean-
Yeah, that's okay, it was, it was a good point.
Well, in, in any case-
Trying to, trying to maintain the record.
We understand.
Thank you.
Yes, let's, let's-
So, on A-frames, maximum width twenty-eight inches wide.
What page are you on?
I'm on page fourteen.
Okay, so twenty-eight.
Twenty inches, twenty-eight inches wide.
Okay, so this wide.
Maximum height, three feet, maximum size, six square feet per sign face.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Then we get into, you know, the question of-
It's citywide.
So, getting, getting back, sorry, I don't mean to harp on this one, but-
That's big.
Are we okay with multifamily having more signs, or was the no freestanding sign applicable to R-ten, R-eight, R-six, R-five, R-three-and-a-half, R-two?
I think it's totally appropriate for an apartment complex to have a freestanding sign that says, this is the Mount Pleasant Apartments, and if they wanna have something on the wall that says, Mount Pleasant Apartments, seven fifteen Lynn Avenue.
So we'll separate out the R-two from the remainder of the residential?
Or the vacancies, but I'm talking about single-family residential.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I agree with that.
You know, now, in McLaughlin, we have some areas that have pre-existing non-conforming multiple-family apartment complexes, you know, like fourplexes or sixplexes, but I, I think the fourplexes don't have, but the sixplex has a sign.
And, you know, if it's mixed use, it's a different deal, too.
We had a comment about hours of placement for signs, not within residential, up to twelve hours per day. Fifteen, four A, on page fifteen, and the implication being that the signs can be outside of their business hours, and I think, I think that was reasonable adjustment would be to say, during normal business hours and for no longer than twelve hours per day. Because if they're only open for four, then they should only be out there for four, not people walking and tripping around it for another eight, if they're open for fourteen, then they gotta figure out what twelve they're gonna put it out for, and the reality of it is, we probably wouldn't notice the hour on each end, but at least we also know that it isn't supposed to be out there at midnight if they're not open.
So that sentence would say, signs may be within the right-of-way during normal business hours, or, or-
Well-
For up to a maximum-
Is that for downtown?
Twelve hours per day. Now, this is in the commercials.
Signs within the right-of-way.
Is in the commercials.
That's just right-of-way, it doesn't matter where they are.
So if I'm on Malala Avenue, Safer Way can have an A-frame sign sitting out on the sidewalk?
So this would be regulating the, the, the con, the sign in the public right-of-way, if they were to put it on their property, they could leave it there.
Right.
Yeah.
So if they put it behind the sidewalk.
But they could have a sign out on the-
On the, on the sidewalk, yeah.
Yes.
Once again, and I will float this by the, I think that the reason it was changed from business hours, you get into the content issue again, I hate to keep going back to this.
Right.
But that's where we're getting pushed.
Well, I, I guess I question how, how that can be a content issue if the, the business is either open or closed, if they're closed, has nothing to do with content.
We're, what we're struggling with is-
You have to attribute it.
There is no code enforcement here at eleven P.M., and how do, how do we ever, you get them the next day, essentially, and so if you set a time limit-
You have deputies.
You could, you could start identifying that pattern.
Deputy, deputize Denise.
Deputize people, and we go around and we go.
Date stamped with time, yes.
On our cameras. That's, wait, wait.
Well, it does, it does become the, I mean, regulating-
Yeah.
Times of use is, is difficult in the right-of-way.
Personally, I didn't really understand that.
Well, I, I guess you could say the same thing for twelve hours per day.
It's, it's really tough, other than, other than you-
Who's monitoring how long it's out there?
Yeah, but if you have a bar or a restaurant that opens up at ten o'clock or noon, and is open later, right, when we come in at eight o'clock or seven o'clock, after two days, you realize that there's a pattern there of it being left out overnight.
But, I, I guess, in, with all due respect, it's a lot easier for me to say, if the business doors are open and the business is operational, then that sign's entitled to be there, but if the doors are closed, and it says closed on the door and the sign's still out there, that sign shouldn't be there.
Well, I mean, okay, so what, what about, like we do with the residential signs, where we say Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday between twelve and eight, and from six to AM to one P.M. on Tuesday, right, so let's, do we, there's nothing special about twelve hours, right, so is it-
Those are particular hours, so it's easy to tell.
You can have it from eight to twelve, eight AM to twelve P.M.
When you talk about enforcement, if, if I'm the sign police, and I see the sign out there, and it's at a time when it's inappropriate, then that's pretty cut and dry.
Right.
So that's what I'm trying to say, is, can we do that for, for, for commercial, do we just set a time period when you're allowed to have a sign out there, as opposed to, I open at eight, you open at ten, you open at noon?
So you could say-
And that gets into the issue of how many signs can you have on a frontage, the early guy wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be advantaged, because he comes in early and takes the one, one frontage sign, because there's only so many hours, and so they just have to work it out to a certain extent, so, I see it, Tom.
Well, so you, you could set hours, and you could, you could say from, say, ten o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night.
Um, and you know, based on the purpose of the signs and everything, I would almost say, like, ten AM to dusk, because once the sun goes down, ninety-nine-point-nine percent of those signs are invisible, and then they become a tripping hazard and everything else, they serve no value to cars driving by, maybe there's some special event going on, and they've got, you know, the midnight sale on, on the street, well, then it's a special event, and-
You said rather, and I understand, I understand your, you know, that, you know, the usefulness to automobiles is debatable on A-frames.
Right.
So, you know, theoretically, you're like, you know, the sidewalks are lit enough to use those, so I mean, it'd be easier for us to say between X and Y.
Like ten and eight, or whatever.
Right, instead of dusk, which is gonna continually change.
Especially with global warming.
No, it doesn't change.
So the, I, I think what I'm hearing is the first, the preference would be business hours.
Yeah.
Right.
And so if we can't do business hours, maybe we could look at X to Y times here.
Times, like-
So nine AM to nine P.M., or nine AM to ten P.M., something like that.
Right.
Are we creating a enforcement nightmare?
Either way, though, I don't know that there's a good way to do, there's no easy way to enforce.
Well-
Well, and, but what happens is, at ten o'clock, when the police officer has pulled over somebody, or they're walking around, and they see an A-frame out, they can throw it in their trunk, because it's an illegal sign, and, you know, or worse yet, they're chasing somebody at midnight, and the guy picks up the A-frame and throws it at the cop, well, now, you can cite the guy for having the sign out illegally on top of that, I mean, there's, I'm, you know, I mean-
Well, I, I like what, Tony, what you're saying, is that if, if you can make it so it's, it's a measurable thing, it's, it's not just-
It's infinitely better than-
Subjective, if, if you say from twelve hours a day, how do I know when that sign was put out?
Twelve hours started.
It's very different.
I have no idea, but if you say it's between nine AM and nine P.M., now-
You're set sideboards.
If the sign's still out there at eleven o'clock at night, it's in violation.
Or if code enforcement, when they start at seven, seven-thirty, or eight o'clock, it's easy enough to drive down Main Street.
Yeah.
Right?
It's out there two hours too soon.
Yeah, and frankly, that nine to nine seems to be, I think that's a much, to say that, because if, if the guy's responsible and he closes at six-thirty, he's gonna take his sign, if he isn't, it's stolen, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
On the previous page, on page fourteen, there was the discussion about the placement of the A-frame, where we've indicated, you know-
Oh, right.
Six inches from the face of the curb, I think no matter where you put these, you're gonna run into one type of a conflict or another, whether it be with doors opening on automobiles, or, you know, my big concern would be the ADA access and the clearance, because, you know, you tend to have your tree wells up against the curb, your parking meters up against the curb, it is cluttered, but the free, the free space, you know, which is what now, four feet of ADA?
Yeah, four and a half.
It gets, gets tight, you know, downtown at least has wider sidewalks, but-
Well-
You start to come up Seventh, it's gonna get-
It's narrow.
It's tricky.
In Portland, you have your portion of the building, or portion of the sidewalk that's directly adjacent to the building, which is considered your furnishing zone, that's where you can put your tables and chairs and things like that.
Wish this was working the way he said.
And, and that, depending on the width of the sidewalk, it can be anywhere from two to four feet, and then you've got the, the travel zone, that's usually five feet wide, and then the strip that's directly adjacent to the curb would be where you, you have your tree wells and things like that, so it's that travel zone that you've gotta keep clear, and if people start encroaching from either direction, then that, that would be a violation, and it-
Do you envision that five-foot, let's say you've got seven businesses along that block, right, I mean, is it, is the expectation that that five-foot would be a straight shot, or could you go back and forth?
It doesn't have to be straight, but it, it has to be unimpeded.
Unimpeded, yeah.
It has to be clear, so if, if you have, you know, the worst-case scenario, you've It has to be clear. So if, if you have, you know, the worst case scenario, you've got tables and chairs in front of one business and then directly adjacent to that, you've got signs that are, uh, adjacent to the curb that create, uh, you know, such a serpentine path that it becomes hazardous. And I, I think, uh, maybe Damon mentioned, you know, that the hazard of depending on the placement of that sign next to the curb could be in your way when you.
That was Paul mentioning that, yeah.
So I, I think that's a concern too. I like the idea, uh, I think Jonathan was suggesting that having the sign in close proximity to the entrance door to the business, to me makes no sense.
I mean, if you really wanted to, and that, you know, this gets, once again, you know, the enforcement part of this is difficult, right? But, you know, you have marked parking. Put it at where the hood and the trunk would come together.
And at the, on the side.
You avoid the door open area theoretically.
Got sign zones again, yeah.
Right, you back to sign zones.
Yeah, but the other side of it is, is, you know, I really don't care. And if there's a sign in my way, I got no problem opening my door and knocking the sign over. And I think if it's a routine problem, that the, that the person who owns the sign is gonna move it, or it's gonna get broke up. Or, you know, I mean, I, I think that becomes a self-correcting problem at a certain point. Cause I know I'm not alone and people have got no problem with their old car door swinging it open.
That's true.
And depending upon the car, you've got like a six-foot long door, you know, some of those older cars, or you got a little four-foot door. So how far away from the curb do you get, you know, I, I think becomes problematic. I think it becomes a self-correcting problem with people opening doors, or the ADA guy wants to put his, you know, he needs his wheelchair thing to come downhill, you know, it'll get moved one way or another. So. So I, I'd rather have everything in one, for lack of a better term, clutter strip down the road where it's trees and hydrants and benches, and it's here, and then people can walk down the sidewalk and look in windows and, you know, sit on, you know, whatever, I mean, I think that's better to have, have that. I mean, I understand completely the concern about at a certain point, you know, where do you open your, your door, but, um, that at least becomes self-correcting, whereas hydrants and trees aren't, and you gotta play that game.
And, you know, as far as that pedestrian clearance, I think, uh, that can be something that the, uh, the business association can self-police and say, hey, your, your sign's out in the middle of the sidewalk, that's not appropriate. Uh, everybody can kind of work together and, and agree that they're, they're either gonna have it up against the building or they're gonna have it over by the curb, but they're not going to impede that pedestrian way.
Right now, it's written as within six inches of the curb. So do we, are we comfortable with that, or do we need to amend it?
Well, do we wanna say cur- within six inches of the face of the curb or building face? So that they can adjust as they feel they need to, or do we wanna just leave it in one place? I like the idea of people serpentineing cause it slows them down. Means they have to look at what they're doing and they're not texting.
Yeah.
But that also means the texting person's gonna walk into the sign, um, which becomes self-correcting. But, you know, and there's times when you want the, you know, the, the menu board to be right at your door. Today's special is fish, and on top of it is a little clip or a little tray with menus that you can pick up and read. Um, you know, whatever that may be.
We can't be everything to everybody.
Right.
And I like the idea of a sign, uh, uh, zone placement. It, it's something that's easily recognizable, easily enforced. It's a regulation that people will identify with. And it's not arbitrary.
So if we leave it the way it's written, we have a sign set.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, but, uh, also, uh, Jonathan says something to the extent of placing, uh, near the entrance of the, of the, uh, of the storefront. We've gotta make a decision one way or another, or we're just.
Well, I mean, at the expense of being contradictory, I think we should probably give, try to give people some flexibility. And I, I think that we may be regulating ourselves into a situation where there might be a need to have the sign adjacent to the building for whatever reason.
Yes.
And then we may end up having to put this sign in a really bad location adjacent to the curb because the city said they have to do that. And then we're in a really bad predicament. So I, I, I always like to have a little bit of an out with the code so that there's, there's, if we run into those unintended consequences that we often do with this, that we can actually put it somewhere else.
So if we said within six inches of the curb or within six inches of the building, that gives them the flexibility.
Good.
I like that.
I think that's okay. If we're gonna have A-frame signs, I mean, it might as well.
Can't be out in the middle of the sidewalk that way. It's one or the other.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
I don't like to see a sign located near a door on a car so the mother can't put her kids into the car from the sidewalk and has to go out around. They do it anyway, drives me nuts, you know, that little toddler and they put them. Put them in on there.
But I think we have it on the parking place border like Tony was talking about.
Yeah, I like that.
You know, where you have the front end and the rear end zones there, that, then there's probably less of a chance of it happening.
The property owner some guidance here. Otherwise, it's, it's gonna end up arbitrary.
So is that it then?
No, so I, so I had two more things. Um, I had asked Laura, where was the reference to if you're in a mixed-use commercial zone and you're in the Canema National Registered District, or you are in the McLaughlin District, where's the reference to what their sign code requirements are? Because there was, there's a, there was a different standard.
Yeah, at the very least, additional sign code requirements may be net, may be imposed by the National Historic Registered District. Some sort of si- sentence or.
Yeah, cause we.
Refers to, you know.
We used to, we used to have an HC zone and there was a reference to, you know, this is what you get to do. And the reason I'm asking this is because in the Conservation District and the National Registered District, you are not allowed to have an internally illuminated sign. Your sign must be externally illuminated. So I, I didn't, I was trying to find it.
It's on page three. Fifteen twenty-eight oh three oh J. In addition to this chapter, signs within historic districts should be reviewed by the HRB for compliance with Municipal Code seventeen forty E oh six oh E. However, that review shall not consider the con- content of the sign in any way.
She added that after you.
After I did that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Clarify rule of nature.
Cool.
So in seventeen forty oh six oh, which I don't have in front of me, E. Is that speci- Tony's getting hot. Tony's going to get the code. Where is it? Where's the code? At one time in my life, I used to know this by heart.
That's why I never seen that.
When you don't use it all the time, it's out of sight, out of mind. And then the only other thing is, is that, um, I told, I, I was, I feel very strongly about the fact that we need to have something in the code that says after a certain period of time, you need to get rid of your non-conforming sign. I think having it at the discretion of the owner is in, is, doesn't get us to compliance, and it doesn't get us to the community that we wanna see.
Last time.
But because we didn't enforce it, and I could name names.
This time.
It, because we are going to do it. I am confident.
Well, I think they said that last time.
Look up, look up GK Travel versus the City of Lake Oswego.
Where's GK Travel versus the City of Lake Oswego?
Yeah, and then look up how long it took to litigate that, that whole issue.
Denise is going to be the sign deputy.
How long did it take?
It was about, it was about a five, six-year ordeal.
And how many dollars?
Hmm, quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Quite a bit.
Well, so we, we balance the cost of litigation versus the, the cost of just going to and say, we'll put your new sign up for you if you'll just let us.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think.
Okay.
So I think the one change here was trying to incorporate the, the, the maintenance component of it. You know, to try to start to get those signs, but, um.
Where, where is that in here?
Uh, under, they have to be maintained, and if they're more than so much beat up, then they need to be brought to compliance.
Seventeen forty oh six oh.
E.
E. E. What, what page?
Well, that's just the thing for exterior alterations. That doesn't say anything about signs. It says for exterior alterations of historic sites in Historic District, Conservation District, blah, blah, blah.
Doesn't, it get into the design standards? It references back to those.
It gets into the standards that we use for exterior alteration, but there was something specific about.
Sign guidelines adopted by the Historic Review Board.
This is not a good font. That is so light.
It's good old Arial.
Yeah, but it needs to be darker or something.
Or a little.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not seeing it. I don't see any reference to signing, and I don't have my design guidelines on me, which I do have those memorized almost.
You don't.
And I, and I'm being very specific about it. There are a number of non-conforming ex- internally illuminated signs in the McLaughlin Conservation District that I'll be, I'll admit it, I would like to see them come into compliance because they're not legal now.
They are pretty.
So if we look at.
And they're adjacent to people's houses and they're just on all night and all day.
So if we look at page eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep.
And there may be others in other people's neighborhoods, but.
Non-conforming.
I'm picking on those people in McLaughlin.
So this is where we tried to expand. Try to drive that, bringing the sign into conformity.
Whenever repairs and restoration of a damaged, non-conforming sign are not started within ninety days of the s- date the sign was damaged or are diligently pursued once started, the sign will be deemed abandoned.
Yeah, these are, these are not damaged signs.
Abandoned signs.
What about if a sign is not brought into conformity that's a non-conforming sign within a period of whatever? The, um, business loses its business license.
That gets into the content of the sign.
How's it, how's that, David?
You don't know if the business has been abandoned unless you read what the sign says.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking about signs that are not, that are non-conforming today, have been non-conforming over the last ten years, and they will not be conforming under this code either. Whatever code we end up adopting. Cause there's no way to incentivize or encourage them to change it because they didn't do it right in the first place.
Are you saying the business is not in, uh?
The business is, is in compliance, their sign is not.
Well, what about a sign where the business doesn't exist anymore? They just didn't take down the sign?
Well, that's, that's something completely different.
Well, that falls under the abandoned sign.
It's abandoned. These are not, these are not abandoned, they're just not in conformance because they're externally lit. I mean, excuse me, internally lit.
And then on page nineteen, we talked about the maintenance component of that.
Yeah.
We're trying to attack it from the abandonment, the non-conformity, if you're in, if it's damaged more than fifty percent.
Yeah, these are.
You need to bring it into conformity.
They're not damaged.
I'm not sure what to tell you on this one.
I don't either. I, I just.
You know, there's a, there's a process of acknowledging pre-existing non-conforming uses. I, I really can't recommend based on the last experience of the amortization over ten years.
Oh, no, I think ten years is way too long.
I'm, I'm just saying, and to target one over the other, um, you know, there's just, there wasn't political will to do it.
Yeah, so was there an attempt that, that the city staff attempted to do this at one point?
Our last, when the la- when the sign code was updated last time, it was, there was an amortization of ten years, I think off the top of my head. Put in there that all non-conforming sites need to be brought into conformance after ten years. Ten years came around, we're gonna start doing this, and it wasn't political to do that.
When we worked for the city, he never enforced anything. When you and I were staff, we couldn't get him to do anything.
Well, I mean, not only that, but, you know, we had a city manager that D-enforced things too, so that's a whole nother issue.
Story, but.
Well, but can, could we say that, um, signs, I'm just trying to think, we've already got this timeline, the, and you know, the, the, I don't know whether we say, signs did, you know, know, that have passed their amortization are non-conforming and shall be deemed as such and fined accordingly, or something like that. I mean, cause we already have the timeline.
That, no, that language has been removed.
They removed it.
It's not here. It says, existing signs are allowed to remain unless removed by the owner. The previous code included an ama- amortization period.
That's, that's ridiculous. I'm not saying it's, it's, it's just, the whole thing that Bob talked about of us presenting something to our community, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I, let, let me just expand this. It's, it's, you know, the one on Malala Avenue I was speaking about, that somebody's misappropriated for something else. It's a for-sale sign. Now it says it's a business sign. That's an illegal sign. It should, they should have to take their stuff off of it, and the people in McLaughlin who have externally lit signs.
Internally.
Internally lit signs that were never approved in the first place should be allowed some grace period so they can bring their signs into conformance.
I'm not picking a fight.
No, no, I was saying.
How do we know, how do we know they were never allowed? I mean, do we know the date that, I mean, or did they, I mean, I just don't, A, I don't know how many we're talking about.
We're on, I'm on the record. Well, let's just say that I know for a fact that they were never allowed, period. Because they are internally lit. The one that was there in the first place, then the next guy came in and just put his sign face on it, then the next guy came and put his sign face on it. The one that was there to begin with was never approved, period.
I'd leave this to you. You've, we, we've kind of explained the track right here and what we've tried to do to accommodate it because I'm not sure it's realistic.
I, I guess the concern I have is that it appears that with this change, we've completely caved in on the idea of having existing non-conforming signs removed, unless the owner chooses to remove.
Or they're abandoned or not repaired.
They will never choose to get rid of them. It's, it's, you know, I understand free will and all that. And I, I don't know exactly what the answer is, but I think this is just letting everybody off the hook. So anybody new has to, has to toe the line.
Incentivize it.
And everybody else gets to keep.
Reduce sign permit fee.
Their crappy signs.
What, well, okay, wait a minute. What if we say?
Yeah.
What if we leave this, but say, um, you know, unless removed by the owner, with the exception of signs within the historic district which have one year to be brought into compliance with the requirements of the historic district?
Thinking about it, saying that the neighborhood should incentivize them to get rid of them.
Yeah, I, I mean, they, all of that, but I'm just saying, it's, it's a particular issue in a historic district which is trying to present a, a particular face and a particular, I mean, you don't wanna lose your historic designation because there's too many exceptions. There's federal grant money, there's lots of extra reasons why the historic district should have stronger regulations.
Integrity.
Yeah, so, you know, leave, you know, whatever the guy's got on Seventh, he's got, but, you know, the guy in, you know, Washington needs to have his sign done properly because it's in a historic district. It is a special place. It was a special place when he moved there. There were rules in place when, when he moved there, and he needs to comply. Oh, I mean, and then we give him one year from the date this code is adopted to change.
You know, I think this enforcement thing goes way beyond a sign.
Well, it does, but.
Uh, well, Damon, you were on the commission.
Mm-hmm.
You know, from a political standpoint.
I'm not on the commission because I didn't worry about political concerns.
You've got the mindset. You know what I'm talking about. I don't have to draw you a picture about this. But are you prepared to tell the, the commission, as, as part of the enforcement program, that they ought to budget at least a hundred thousand dollars for, for court cases and enforcement and, and.
At least, maybe more now, yeah.
Because it boils down to money.
Yeah.
And money then translates into political will. Do you have the political mutsba to stand up before the, the electorate of this community and say, this is what we're going to do to enforce this sign code? And that's what it boils down to. Now, if the commission says, no, we don't. We're not gonna tell our, our electorate, our citizens here, that we're gonna do this. Or the Chamber of Commerce, or the downtown Main Street, you know, we're gonna do the best we can with the resources we got. Then that's what we're left with, and we ought to quit circling the wagons.
And we should just quit wasting time on even this code.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, without this particular item of enforcement, the message you're sending is, we've got a lot of words here, but we're not going to enforce this code.
Except from here on out.
So why would anybody come in and get a permit?
So what, what if when we had a new business license, cause you said businesses changed over and nothing happened? So what if we had it as part of like a sign audit, that every time they get a business license, we check to see if the sign's in conformity?
I, I already volunteered to, to Laura that I would be willing to spend my personal time documenting all the signs in Oregon City. And then we can find some volunteers to ta- check those against whether they actually have permits or not. Cause you have to start somewhere. We do have sign permits in file at, at the planning department. But most people, I'm sure, you know, they get their business license and they look at it once and then they never think about it again.
Well, I think we ought to tie it to the business license if we're gonna get serious about this. I mean, every year they have to, do they have to renew every year?
Yes, every year, every year they're required to renew.
Like Zach says, that you gotta sign audit. You're in compliance or you're not, you know?
And you could have it.
And you could have it where you're in compliance, there's, you get your sign permit, no, no extra fee, but if you're out of compliance.
You're fine.
Then we treat yourself.
Or you don't, your, your business license is, is not issued until it's brought into conformance. I mean, if you wanna get down and dirty, that's it, right there.
Tony's smiling.
Tony, how many?
I just always, the no-fee thing always, because it's not free.
It's not free, and that, that's what I said at the, several of the workshops.
Incentivize it somehow.
People came in and said, oh, we shouldn't charge people for permits. I said, no, they should be charged because then it'll mean something to them.
Yeah.
Well, and then my question is, how many businesses have business licenses?
They're all supposed to have one.
They're all supposed to.
Posted.
How many have business, like, what's the percentage?
I don't know, Damon.
So, because there's been a lot of businesses I've been into that don't have the little sign stuck up on the wall.
I look.
They may have it, but.
I look. They're, it's supposed to be visibly posted.
I understand.
It's required.
Well, I, I don't know, you know, obviously, there's, there's the legal considerations and there's the budget considerations. City council, do they have the political will to do it?
Well, we have to go to the council and say they need to do something.
I think removing the requirement to bring non-conforming existing signs into compliance is just waving the white flag of surrender. I, I think, and ten years is way too long. I, I don't, I don't think, I mean, that, that's putting that compliance so far out there that.
Everybody will forget about it.
Everybody's just gonna say, I don't care. I think it's gotta be no more than two years.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and maybe it gets tied like Zach is suggesting into the business license renewal, and then every year when you come in, you have to maybe present a photograph of your sign. I don't know, something.
Why not, why not their non-conforming parking lot, or their non-conforming landscape?
You have to bring your permit, your sign permit.
Well, you know, compliance is the biggest problem we're talking about. When we talk about traffic and we're, we're looking at these subdivision deals that we're talking about, and, and annexation and everything else, and people are driving forty-five miles an hour through a twenty-five mile an hour zone, you know, it, it's not that the regulation isn't there, it's that nobody's enforcing it. And if, if we don't say that the sign code means something, then, you know, we're just wasting our time.
That's right. That's right.
By the way, you should know that downtown is pretty darn good. They don't have the same issues up on the Hilltop and other places where there's weird sign.
I don't know about that.
Downtown's pretty, is, is pretty good. It's much better than it used to be.
I think this would be worth a joint, or bringing this up in a joint work session just to communicate.
The whole issue.
I'll write, I'll write it up.
The issue of compliance is something that we need.
Yeah, I, I think somehow that's gotta get built in.
To get across the city commission that this is, with, like you say, without this is no teeth. It's like, it's like basically have, you know, taking your dentures out and that's it.
I think we've identified the problem. I think the next thing to do is, is exchange ideas and, and discuss it and arrive at a decision.
Well.
And make it public.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've, we've spent a lot, I mean, if you collectively look at how much time has been spent on this revision and update to the sign code, I, I bet you it's probably a thousand hours.
More.
People's time, maybe more than that. So, you, you figure if, if you quantify the, the value of that time that's into the sign code update, you know, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars worth of people's time and effort, and so, you know, I, I think it's kind of a slap in the face to everybody who's been involved in this than just to wave the, the white flag and say, well, we got a great sign code, but we're not gonna enforce it. That, that enforcement's got to be.
The flip side is, I just hope, you know, we realize that this isn't just exterior lit signs in Canema or McLaughlin.
It's everything much bigger.
This is taking down billboards on two thirteen. This is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, K O C sign, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of signage here that if we say, you got two years to tear it down, we are, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna.
That K F C sign's not going anywhere.
Why?
It's my favorite sign in the whole, in the whole city.
It's been designated as a landmark.
Well, they need to fix it and maybe rotate it.
Can we have a sign protection ordinance?
Anyway, that's why I was saying.
Oregon City Shopping Center sign. We're gonna go tell them to take it down?
That's not a story.
After we just approved a variance of it?
We just approved a variance of it?
Yeah.
It's, what's it been, four or five years maybe?
Well, variance is a variance.
No, they came in and asked us for a variance, and we denied it.
There was a different one.
It was the second one.
That was the second one. No, we weren't, I wasn't on the commission.
And, and, you know, there, there is a provision, I'm looking at right here on page eighteen, for variances.
She can get more signage if she was in compliance.
So, if there is a sign that's non-conforming.
Yeah.
We have a mechanism that somebody can come in and say, hey, I've got this non-conforming sign, you know, it's in the shape of the state of Oregon, and it's got a little deer, you know, in front of it. I'd really like to keep that, you know? It's been up on this, on this building.
It's iconic.
It's been on this building for a hundred years. Can I keep it? And I, I think we'd probably say, yeah, well, we'll, we'll give that sign a variance. That's a special sign.
I'll, I'll nominate the K F C sign as a local landmark.
I think you should.
Anyway, to get back on subject, I guess, I'm happy with just saying, doing some rigid with, with the historic district. That's, it's a limited area. It's a limited impact. If we want to go whole hog, then, you know, fine, I'm okay with that too. But, and as far as, because it's getting late, so I'm kind of trying to wrap things up so you, because you only have a few minutes of thing, but.
Good idea.
But as far as sandwich board or A-frames, I think the consensus was six inches curb or building. We never did it really address the frontage question for large frontage tax lots. I, I would be comfortable with saying something like, you know, a single tax lot of greater than fifty feet of frontage may have a second sign.
Right.
You know, that way, at least they get a second sign out front. Depending on where their doors are, that's up to them to figure it out, but at least, because I don't want to necessarily write a whole rule for two or three places. You know, and who knows, somebody might buy three or, you know, a whole block, tear it down, and turn it into one tax lot. Now they know what, what their signage is gonna be for that. So, um, so those, and then, yeah, so that's the three big ones, I think, at this point. And you know what we're, what the argument is about residential freestanding signs, so I think those are our last bits of concern.
You need anything else from us?
We did get a question, comment from Cleckamas Community College.
Oh, yes.
On these institutionally zoned properties, you know, is there, they, they want to modernize their signage, and so you're essentially looking at probably some type of a LED lit sign, you know, essentially says, welcome back to school, students.
You mean like a reader board?
But it wouldn't be, they still, they don't want one that rotates.
Oh, okay.
Right, so it says, in the morning, classes start nine A.M., welcome back to school.
Like the high school has their four lines.
But then, let's say that night, they have the chorus singing.
Singing.
Yeah.
So, what they requested was, could they change it, you know, three times a day?
So, be an electronic sign?
It'd be an electronic sign, and they could change the message.
But it wouldn't be a moving sign.
Would not be a moving sign. They're, they're asking to change the content.
A fixed sign.
And it's not a, it's not a billboard.
It's not a billboard.
A fixed sign that they could periodically change the content.
Or, you know.
Registration starts.
Schools, yeah, registration, yeah.
Registration starts December, whatever.
And all of a sudden, we have the snowstorm, schools canceled.
Right.
But technically, they can't change it, right, legally. So, what they're asking for.
You're talking about time versus content, right?
Yes. It wouldn't be rotating, wouldn't be flashing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
It would be the opportunity to change the sign, much like our gas stations change their, their price in the morning and in the evening.
I think for that use, it's appropriate.
I think that's a public service. I think, I don't have any problem with that.
So, I could write something about institutional uses with, could change their, change their copy up to three times a day or something.
And I guess my question is, why does it need to be institutional uses? How many reader board signs do we have, and if we said, content must remain in place for two hours at a time? So, they could change it several times, you know, how, how effective, it's not an effective advertising tool.
You just worry, if you open it up citywide to the incremental loss of the control that you have.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's every two hours, then it becomes every one hour.
And then it becomes.
And then it becomes, oh, it's moving.
They have a special for one hour, and then it changes to the next special for another hour, and.
Well, I, I'm just.
But if, if you limited it to a maximum of three changes per day, right?
Yeah, and, but I'm, but I'm just saying, why does it need to be limited to institutional?
Right.
I guess it, it doesn't. The, the request was from the institution.
Yeah.
And so, I didn't want to open up a whole issue of which I know we have a concern with.
Well, I would agree with Damon.
Well, who else might conceivably use a sign like that?
I have absolutely no idea who's gonna come in in the next five years.
We're looking at a sign code that you want to have.
Would the police department want something like that in front of their, well, they're in a residential zone, so they don't, I don't think.
You want the sign code to be valid for ten years. You don't, and, and there's unanticipated uses that might come in the next ten years. I, I agree with Damon. I don't think you have to limit it to institutional use, but you do spell out the guideline to say, three text changes per day is the maximum changes, so that you can't get into one of those rotating bars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess.
So, what I'm hearing is you're okay with three times a day in citywide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm still thinking about that.
As long as you don't have exploding, exploding bombs and stuff like that. Now, is that content?
Well, it can't be moving.
Yeah, it's not moving. We're talking post-text.
What about residential zones? I don't want to see reader boards.
No, I would limit it institutional.
Commercial, institutional or commercial?
Well, and it's probably, it's, it's a C U in residential, conditional use.
Yeah.
Well, Damon, you, you mentioned what we've covered, and now have we covered, did that include enforcement? Your, your thoughts?
He's talking about enforcing it more rigidly in historic districts and less in nonhistoric districts, but he said that he could live with it.
Yeah, I support. Depending on the language that, you know, but, and get, to get back to your political will question, I'm not on the city commission because I stood up in front of the people and said, we need a payment, payment maintenance utility fee, and I don't care if you can't afford it. I'm unemployed also, and we need to do this. So, you know, that's, you know, there, it, it takes three people with political will for two budget cycles, and that's all it'll take. If we can get two budget cycles of enforcement, then.
It'll take care of itself.
Ninety-nine percent of the people are not.
But I think the discussion needs to be held.
Mm-hmm. Well, it will be. Yeah, I got no doubt about that.
Because I agree with, with Charles, because unless we have an enforcement here, we've got nothing.
It's toothless.
We might fold our chance and go home. So, Tony's gonna talk to the city attorney and figure out what language they can find acceptable.
For which, for the non-conforming?
For non-conforming.
Well, there's the temporary.
Oh, well, I mean, it's just, I think we just need to decide, are we doing it citywide? Are we doing it only in conservation and historic districts, and then just pick a year and see where it goes?
I'd go for citywide.
Citywide, two years.
Citywide.
Citywide here.
I will happily write it up so you can defend it.
Thank you.
Well, the other thing, I think there's an advantage too, that there, there may be, you know, if you're in an urban renewal district, you potentially have an ability to come to the commission and ask for help. If you're not.
Well, and that's why we have fifteen twenty-eight one thirty for variances, that if there is a specific circumstance that merits a variance, we can look at that.
Would that include an extension of the two years? Which, is that what you're thinking of?
Well, I, I would say specifically, if you're looking at the K F C sign.